Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. A roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The record shall reflect that all members are present.
Okay, if you'll all rise, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance will be held by our deputy mayor Franklin.
My pledge allegiance is a flag, up with the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, in accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members... Could I please have quiet? I'll just remind you guys that this is a public meeting, and so we're going to observe order and decorum at the meeting and conduct yourselves in a courteous manner, so please allow silence and allow the meeting to go on. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing is the approval of the agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, there's one item to be removed from the agenda, and that is on the consent calendar. That would be C5, entitled Property Assess Clean Energy Programs. And that is it.
Okay, then the recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed, which we just had one removed, from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request-to-speak card to the Clerk's Secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. So if I don't have any other things pulled besides C5, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and Councilmember Aguilera?
I'll second it.
Okay. Please cast your votes. Okay, that passes unanimously. So then, the next thing on our item, we're gonna discuss C5, the property assessed clean energy programs.
No, no, no. PH1.
Before we do that?
No, C5, I pulled it.
Totally pulled?
Limited.
Oh, never mind, he totally pulled that. Okay, no more. All right, so then we're gonna go to Public Hearing 1. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding Olive Avenue Annexation Reorganization at 1505 Olive Avenue. The Community Development and Engineering Director, John Conley, will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request for an annexation, pre-zoning, a general plan amendment, and a tentative subdivision map for a property on Olive Avenue. The proposed project includes an annexation, which would annex from the county into the city of Vista, pre-zoning to establish a zoning designation for the property, a general plan amendment to amend the land use designation, and a tentative subdivision map to split the lot. The lot's currently three acres, roughly. The proposal's for eight single-family homes. It would range in size from about 10,000 square feet up to roughly over 27,000 square feet. The density at about 2.64 units per acre would include associated drainage improvements and utilities, private driveways, there are three which I'll cover, and there are no homes proposed. When the city approves a tentative subdivision map in the R1 zone, it allows for splitting of the lots, but doesn't require architectural review of the home plans as long as they comply with the R1 zone. The proposed property is shown here. It's on the north side of Olive Avenue, just east of Grapevine Road. The pre-zoning would be R1. The general plan designation would be medium-low density. It's currently rural residential or one unit per acre. All of the surrounding land uses are residential, single-family in nature. This shows the existing zoning and general plan designations on the property. You can note the subject site is the red square there that's three acres along the north side of Olive. It's rural residential currently. It would be annexed into the city at medium-low density, which would allow the R1 designation. The bright yellow surrounding the property to the south and to the east is also zoned R1. So you'll note these are two county islands, I would call them, areas that are unincorporated land surrounded by the city, and so LAFCO supports the city annexing these properties, providing sewer and accommodating them at the density of surrounding lots. As far as the issues reviewed by the staff, the lots are consistent with our R1 zone, with the general plan designation of medium-low density. They're consistent with the surrounding land uses and the zoning of residential, single-family, and they're consistent with our land use policies governing annexation in our general plan. The property would also connect to the existing sewer system and improve onsite drainage on the property. These are some views of the site, in the upper left-hand corner, Olive Avenue, looking west from the site, and looking east from the site to the right, looking northeast of the property in the upper right-hand corner, and then looking into the property in the lower part of the slide, and from Olive Avenue. The proposed tentative subdivision map is provided in your packet. It shows a subdivision layout of eight single-family lots. It would preserve the existing single-family home that's in the center of the site and some existing improvements associated with that home. It would include three driveways, which are shown in the overhead, connecting to Olive Avenue, and bioretention basins for storm drain control on the north and south sides of the property. The landscape plan is shown here. The city's development standards require landscaping only in the slope areas in single-family homes, and the remainder of the lot is up to the property owner to landscape. A mitigated negative declaration was circulated for the proposed project in January and February of this year. The city received four comment letters on that environmental document, and responses to those comments are included in your packet. The proposed project would comply with the general plan density of the surrounding areas, would be consistent at 2.64 units per acre with what surrounds the site, and the future homes would have to meet the development standards in the R1 zone. The Planning Commission further reviewed the project on February 7th of this year and recommended approval 6 to 1. The staff recommendation is to adopt a mitigated negative declaration, make application to LAFCO, and provide pre-zoning, and to approve a tentative subdivision map and general plan amendment as submitted in the packet. That completes my staff presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, I have three speakers. Do you want to hear the speakers first? Okay, Lloyd Thompson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I just want to say I thank you for taking the time to look at this project, and I've had the opportunity to work with Ms. Chow over the last couple of years working on this, and I think it's a good project that we've put before you, and I would just ask for your support on it. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have on the project. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Okay, okay. The other two speakers have asked not to speak. They're just registering their in-favor vote. So with that, then, Councilmember Aguilera.
I guess I should have clarified. Not a question for the applicant, for staff. As I was reading through the staff report, and I talked to staff about this, but I still need some clarification. The page 2 of 193, about midway through, there's a statement that says, "Therefore, the applicant is also seeking a general plan amendment to redesignate the site to medium-low-density residential land use, maximum five dwelling units per acre, which would allow a maximum of 15 units on the subject site." So I've been assured that only eight units would be on the three acres. However, this statement kind of still troubles me. I don't understand why it needs to be in there.
The current general plan land use designation is rural residential. It allows one unit per acre. All the lands outside the city that are within our sphere of influence but that could be annexed are at that designation. That was a direction of the council when we updated the plan in 2012. So this property currently has a one-unit-per-acre general plan. We have to amend that to allow for the R1 zoning, consistent with what's around it, to medium-low density. The medium-low-density calculation could equate to 10 or 15, whatever, units per acre, but the R1 zoning is what defines that, what overrides that, what implements that.
Okay.
So the applicant, in any annexation application, the city always requires them to process a subdivision map or a site plan with that so that we know what we're getting. We are changing the general plan land use designation, but we're also adopting a tentative map that shows the layout for eight lots. It's subject to the city council's approval in this case. If it were to be amended or modified, we'd still have to go back through a discretionary process and go to the Planning Commission, so they can't change the eight-lot layout without going through a discretionary approval. However, once the land use designation is changed and the zoning is adopted, if the map expires, the R1 zoning still is maintained. You can't develop much more than eight lots on this property under the R1 zone. The engineer's been working at it for five years. He can tell you, he's tried every arrangement he can to get more than eight lots, and it's just not possible to keep the existing home there.
Okay, so, I guess what you're saying is, we're gonna get eight homes, we're not gonna get 15?
Correct. And even if the map expires, it's highly unlikely that you could get any more than eight homes with the R1 zone, which is what's being asked for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Green.
And just to clarify, this development that's going in is kind of in line and customary to what's surrounding it. It's, you know, there're gonna be homes that are for sale, they're relatively the same as the other homes in the area. It's not a crazy four-story mansions or anything we're gonna throw that's not, you know, customary to that particular area, correct?
Correct.
To the best of your knowledge. Okay.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow up with Councilman Aguilera's question, because that was my question as well, and you say that should the... we change it to allow this higher density than is currently in our general plan, which we only recently adopted. If the plan were to expire, the map were to expire, they can build up to the higher density, although it's said that it's highly unlikely, but it is possible if the existing house were to be sold and torn down. Am I correct?
If the existing house were to be sold and torn down, you could potentially get more than eight lots. However, you would still have to meet the 10,000-square-foot minimum lot-size requirement for the zone, which is what's consistent with what's around there, so you're not gonna see much of a different development pattern than what surrounds the site today.
I'm surprised we didn't have more speakers on this item, because we had a few letters and phone, or emails from constituents who were actually against this for different reasons. But my concern is that this is proposed, we're changing our general plan, and we're amending it, which I'm not a fan of doing since it's so recently done with a lot of thought and foresight, and you've heard me say this before. But I just, the hair on the back of my neck is standing up, that we're gonna approve this to a higher density, and what's proposed isn't what we're gonna end up with, and there's nothing we can do about it. So I am not in favor of this proposal.
Councilmember Green.
So just so that I'm clear, this particular parcel is county land right in the middle of our city, and it's being surrounded by all city properties. Is that correct? It's just like a little parcel that's zoned as a county property, right?
Yes, you can see in the overhead, the gray parcels are county land. The yellow is Vista, and the uncolored is Oceanside. So there are two properties there that are completely surrounded.
So they're already on our sewer, they're already taking advantage?
They're not currently on our sewer, they're on a septic system. In order to develop the property, they have to connect a sewer, which triggers the annexation.
Okay, and they're gonna be connecting to our sewer, obviously?
Correct.
Add into that, but, okay. Just want to make sure, so it's just a little island that's county that we're gonna turn into city, and they will then be able to, like, vote and have a say on what happens in our city and stuff like that, and in addition to... Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Okay, if I don't have any other questions, I would consider a motion. Councilmember Rigby first, I guess.
Thank you. The other item I wanted to address was the traffic study that was done in the mitigated negative declaration. The traffic is bad over there, and it's already a D, and this project, according to this, takes it down to an F. And some people think that, well, you're already a D, and F isn't all that much more worse. Probably grammatically incorrect, I'm sorry, but it's still more traffic in an area that is already impacted on an infrastructure that we have not updated. So that's on 79 of 193, Transportation and Traffic section. So that's just another one of my concerns on this, is the traffic, and looking at this declaration.
Councilmember Aguilera.
So 10,000-square-foot lots, basically, which is a standard out there.
Yes.
I know families that live on Granada, haven't heard anything from them. This is gonna fit in perfectly with what's already there, so with that, I'll make a motion that we accept staff recommendation to annex the property into the city of Vista.
Okay. That includes 1, 2, and 3 recommended actions that are in here? Okay. And close the public hearing?
And close the public hearing, sorry.
Okay, please cast your votes. Motion passes 4 to 1. The next thing on our agenda is our public hearing number 2. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the 2016 Regional Transportation Improvement Program Amendment. And Director Conley is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. The Regional Transportation Improvement Program, also known as the RTIP, is Sandag's methodology of tracking money that they give to the cities. Transnet is a half-cent sales tax measure approved in 1987 by the San Diego voters. It provides the cities an annual contribution for transportation purposes. It's based on road miles and population. The Transnet funds have to be programmed in the RTIP in order to be used for capital projects that the city's pursuing. Based on our five-year projection, Sandag currently looks to give us between 2.2 and 2.5 million over the next five years, and the city has to program that money on an annual basis into our capital program and let Sandag know what we're gonna spend it on. So this year, we have a couple of adjustments that we need to make. We're closing out three projects. We're adjusting the allocation on our street rehabilitation and resurfacing project, and we're adding a project, which is the Traffic Congestion Management Plan that we shared with the council earlier this year. Those adjustments allow us to use transportation funding on all of those projects. We're also gonna participate in the Regional Arterial Management System Cost Sharing Agreement between the cities, which is a Sandag-driven system that they provide information to the cities under, and we're participating in that, and Vista's share of that is $8,800 for this fiscal year. We're required to hold a public hearing, understand Sandag's rules for any changes to the RTIP, and so this constitutes our public hearing, and that completes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
I have no speakers, so do I have any questions from my councilmembers? Seeing none, I would look for a motion. Have a motion in a second.
And close the public hearing.
We're forgetting to do that tonight. Okay, please cast your votes. That passes unanimously. Okay, the next thing on our agenda are discussion items. Items scheduled for discussion generally require detailed explanation by staff or the agency member that has requested the item. Tonight, we have two discussion items. The first one, D1, is proposed amendment to the downtown specific plan at 303 Vista Village Drive. And Director Conley will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proposed amendment to the downtown specific plan at 303 Vista Village Drive. The project location is at the northeast corner of West Vista Way and Vista Village Drive at the western entrance to the Vista Village Shopping Center. The address is 303 Vista Village Drive. It's currently developed with a 6,800-square-foot sit-down restaurant that used to house Famous Dave's Barbecue. The total site acreage is about 1.45 acres. The property is located within the downtown specific plan, the West Gateway District. The downtown specific plan prohibits new drive-through restaurants within the plan. Three existing drive-through facilities that are in the plan were grandfathered when the plan was originally adopted in 2010, and so the proposal tonight would amend the plan to allow one additional drive-through at this location at 303 Vista Village Drive with approval of a special use permit. This is a map of the downtown specific plan area, and the three existing drive-through locations are noted. 827 South Santa Fe, the existing McDonald's at 101 Main Street, Sonic, and at 377 Vista Village Drive, the Burger King, and then the proposed location at 303 Vista Village Drive. The change would not change the overall designation within the plan to allow drive-throughs anywhere. It would just be at this particular location, based on the proposal before us this evening. Raising Canes USA LLC is the applicant. They propose to develop the site with an approximate 4,000-square-foot drive-through restaurant. The site plan shown here and was provided in your packet. It would also involve demolition of the existing restaurant building. The subject of tonight's discussion is not really the development of the site or the demolition of the existing building, but more to allow for a drive-through within the specific plan beyond the three that were grandfathered. So this item was scheduled for council discussion tonight, following the submittal by Raising Canes in February. All the property owners within 500 feet of this project site were notified of the discussion tonight. The staff is requesting direction from the council as to whether or not we should accept an application for a specific plan amendment for this project. And just so the council is aware, if directed to proceed, the specific plan amendment and special use permit would come back to the city council for final approval once planning had processed their application. That completes my staff presentation, and Kevin and I are available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, before I go on, I want to disclose that I actually met with the applicant, and they gave me some promotional items. They gave me, like, a gift card, I think was worth maybe $5, and a t-shirt, and a little football, and so it's all not worth $25, but I wanted to disclose that I met with them, so... Well, Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have the same disclosure, same, well, not the same meeting, but similar meeting with the developer, and I received my little Nerf football and t-shirt as well.
Councilmember Green.
Yeah, I also had that same meeting with Raising Canes, and I did get the football. I also got a bottle opener, a couple tattoos, and their sweet tea is, I'd like to recommend it, is primetime, so thank you for that.
Councilmember Rigby.
I also disclosed that I met with the project, with Raising Kane representatives. I did not take any of the swag. I did have a little teeny cup of the sweet tea, which I can attest was very good, and I gave the cup back, so...
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I also met with the developer and accepted the football and the t-shirt.
Okay, so with that, I have the speakers first, is that okay with... Okay, we're gonna do Kristen Roberts. She'll be followed by Mica Brant. Yeah.
Okay. Ooh, that's loud.
There you go.
We're the football culprits. Mayor, Council, thank you very much for the time this evening, and for staff for all the time as well. Wanted to give the audience and staff and council a brief update about Raising Canes. Mica is here with me. She is the marketing guru for California, so I will turn a lot of the community information over to her. I'm more the technical property development, all the not-so-fun stuff, but let me work through this, and then I'm happy to answer any questions. Raising Canes, Todd Graves is our founder, founded this restaurant in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and he got the worst grade in his college class with his business plan, and no one would give him a loan for a concept as simple as chicken fingers. So he took a job as a boiler maker, started fishing for Sockeye Salmon, raised as much money as he could, bought an old restaurant, or an old building, and renovated it, and the first Raising Canes was opened in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, in 1996. First night, they stayed open until 3:30, and I'm sure they could have stayed open later, but he finally had to close it for the day. Our concept is simple, we have one love, chicken fingers, and one thing done right. One thing I do want to point out for everybody here and for the council as well, is that we are all trained as fry cooks and cashiers, every employee from top to bottom. Once a year, we have to get certified. We work back of the house, front of the house. Todd wants us to be able to go drop bird at any time at any restaurant to help out, whether it's a tornado, or Texas tornado, any emergency that we might need to jump in and help out. So that's one thing we're really proud of, that we can all say that we're true team members, and we're all part of the crew. I wanted to show you a couple of the restaurants that we have already here in California. I believe we have five? Five. Five right now. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mica to talk a little bit about how we become part of the community. Just that, get out of your way here. Raising Canes is not your traditional drive-through restaurant. We have our five Cs. Kane starts with C, so we might as well keep with that theme.
Chuck right in your microphone, so I can hear you in the back.
Is that better?
Yeah, it's better.
Kane's has our five Cs. Customer always comes first, extremely involved in the community, but everything we do is about the customer. Our crew comes second because they are our most valued asset from top to bottom. We wouldn't have our restaurants without them. Our culture is huge for us. We make sure that any restaurant you go to across the country is the same feeling you're gonna walk into. They're gonna have their own unique idiosyncrasies, but you're gonna feel like a Canes if you go in Texas, Louisiana, or California. And it's a very fun culture. That's part of our mission statement, is actually cool crew and fun culture. Community, we give back a half percent of our sales directly back to the community. In the 16 months that, since we opened our first restaurant in Costa Mesa, we have given back $75,000 to the community, and that does not include food donations. We're doing tons of food donations to everything we possibly can that needs our help. And then chicken fingers. We're chicken finger restaurants, that has to be one of our five Cs. We always, every year, our GMs get very involved in the communities, and we have six areas of focus. Education, feeding the hungry, pet welfare, sounds a little off, but we are named after our founder's dog, so we gotta give back to those pets. Active lifestyle, business development, entrepreneurship. Todd is the ultimate entrepreneur. And then everything else. Anything in the community that needs help, we will find a way to say yes to support. So these are just some fun photos of things we've done. We've done toy drives, we've painted an office building of a restaurant, of a nonprofit organization that needed their office painted. We did a canned food drive, we've planted flowers, we've had pet fundraisers. Our restaurant has really become a place to hang out and be part of in each community. We like to give back and support the communities, and the communities we have joined have really embraced us and love us. I'm usually one of the first people they call when they're like, "Oh, we need X, Y, or Z." And we're usually the first person to say, "Yes, how can we give back and help even Half percent of... I already went over all this. So Raising Canes is always finding a way to say yes in each of our communities that we join. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Liederman is the next speaker.
Hi, my name is Jeff Liederman. I am the architect for Raising Canes, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the plan, or, you know, that.
Okay, well, when we get through the speakers, we'll stay close. Okay, the next speaker is, looks like Laura, is it Kaye, or... How did I do?
My name's Laura Galey. I've lived in Vista for 25 years. I bought two properties down here in 89 and 90, and at that time, you were engaging in the Pito's Plan that was supposed to take seven and a half years, which took about 19 years, as I recall. And I'm very worried about this project. I think it is an incredible project, I just don't think it's in the right place. The traffic on Vista Way coming into Vista Village Way and Plymouth, which has now turned into practically a freeway, and the Olive Project that's gonna transition, is gonna make that center coming off the freeway a nightmare. It took me 35 minutes to get here. I live a mile away, because it's traffic hour, and you get off the freeway, you have five places to go on the first light. You go up, you have the Olive Transition, and the buses, and the people, and then you have the Village. They already have the Burger King and the Wave, which is very, very active in the summer, and I can understand why Canes would want to put a place. I think it'd be marvelous, but I just don't think there's a room. I think it's gonna create an absolute calamity. There's already a calamity going on in that area, and I think it will make it much, much worse. I think that if they could find another thing, it'd be good. I think that Vista does need more restaurants and fast-food places. There's a lot of kids that do skate parks, but I just can't see how it's gonna, traffic, I don't know what you're gonna do about the traffic. It doesn't make any sense. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cliff Kaiser. Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm here today on behalf of the Vista Village Business Association. I am the immediate past president, and we've discussed this proposed amendment amongst our board members, and the board is in support of making this amendment to bring Raising Cane to downtown Vista. We welcome them. There were a couple of concerns expressed in our dialogue, of course, the traffic that the lady just mentioned. Would have to make sure that we've addressed getting the traffic in and out of that restaurant quickly. There was some concern about having another drive-through in downtown. Out of the three drive-throughs that are already in downtown, this is probably the most suitable location, being right off the freeway. Plus the fact, if it is gonna draw people into downtown, if they come off the freeway instead of driving by Vista at 70 miles an hour, that's a good thing. It'll give better exposure to Rosati's and the other businesses in that part of Vista Village. So the VVBA is in support of this, and we encourage you to approve this amendment.
Thank you. Okay, that is the end of our speakers. The owner, in case any of you have a question, Jay Torso, is also here, the owner of the building. So, but I'll start here with Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Mr. Liederman, can I ask you a few questions? What's the proposed number, or do you know yet, of seats inside the restaurant?
On a typical Raising Cane's for this size, there's usually 88 seats inside the restaurant, and then on the patio, there's usually between 20 and 24 seats.
Okay. And another question I have, are we, are you proposing to alter the location of the curb cuts, or will the curb cuts remain in their existing locations?
So the curb cut off of West Broadway, that one in the back there, that will remain in the existing location, but the one, we're proposing to add a new one on West Vista Way. Just a, yeah, right in and right out only. This is, and it's, again, this is all just a conceptual plan.
Left turn in and right turn out.
Excuse me?
Left turn in and right turn out.
Right in, right out. You can't make a left.
Oh, you wouldn't be able to turn left from Vista Way?
No, this is, it's a simple driveway, just to allow the flow of traffic and ease all of the traffic there.
Okay. Are you eliminating one of the curb cuts on Vista Way when you're adding the second, you're adding one, are you eliminating the existing one?
Right, it is conceptual right now, but at this point, that's, yes, we're having one out and one in.
So I want to clarify for the city council, if I can. The staff has not reviewed this application or this site plan in any way, shape, or form other than to acknowledge that it requires a specific plan amendment for a drive-through, so that's all.
I understand that it's gonna come back before us, I just.
Correct.
I just want to understand as much as we can about it while we're giving direction. And I guess one of the other style issues that I noted, what do you call this raised element here, the tower, if you will? What would you call that?
I believe, well, from here, an entry tower?
Yeah, okay. I noticed you had one of your California locations, the one that's the nighttime picture. I just wanted to point out that I like the stacked stone look on that entry tower, and I would prefer to see that kind of a proposal for a style.
And we can work with staff.
Sure, no, I'm just, while we're giving direction and ideas, I'd like to see something that, you know, that's, we've got a lot of investment going into that area, so I'd like to see as high quality a facade as possible.
Understood.
Those are all the questions I have right now.
Councilmember Green.
All right, so Jay Torso, is that the correct name of the developer over there? Hello, sir, could I ask you a couple questions?
He's actually the building owner.
The building owner, even better, because I'm assuming that you've been looking around to sell this bad boy, because it's been vacant for a while, right? So this is kind of what I'm looking at, is did we pursue other avenues? I know there's a little, you know, unrest, because it's a drive-through, and how they feel about that. I'm wondering, did we look for sit-down restaurants? I know it's been vacant for a while, and it's my understanding there really wasn't much use for that size. I know there were a lot of things going back and forth, but just kind of tell us as a community what you've done up until this point to get to where we're at, please.
Yeah, let me, absolutely. Let me back up just one step. I was a lender on this building. I did not have an intent to be the owner of this building, but I ended up taking it back when the famous Dave's partnership had some issues, let's just leave it at that. And it wasn't because of the restaurant, it was because of the partners. So when I, we ended up taking it back, the restaurant had to close because of their issues, their internal issues. We engaged a brokerage firm named CCP out of the Orange County. We had done some work with them up in Aliso Viejo, and they'd done a wonderful job. And our original plan was to go find a restaurateur that wanted a building of 7,000 feet, and take the existing building as is and bring into it. I have a list here, which I'm more than glad to share with you, but we've probably talked to 40 different types of restaurants that would have originally fit that plan of 7,000, 6,000, 7,000 square feet. And when I say we talked to them, we didn't just send them an email, blasted. We physically got on the phone, and we talked to, if not one, potentially two or three of the decision-makers. And as we found, what we found out is that the marketplace has changed, not just in Vista, California, but all of California, and actually across the United States. The 6,000 and 7,000 square foot restaurants, the sit-down restaurants, are now trying to get into 4,000 and 5,000 square feet. And then the 4,000 and 5,000 square feet restaurants are trying to get into 3,000 and 4,000 or 2,000. And so everybody's shrinking down, because of the footprint needs to be smaller, and obviously because that's how they can be more profitable, or profitable in the end. So what we came out of this research after a year, year and a half, was that we realized that for us to, as now owners of the property, to financially have success, or to reap, basically get our money back on our loan, was we had a decision to make. We either had to continue to look for a 7,000 square foot user, however, those were very small, and we couldn't get anybody. So then our other decision was to knock the building down, or to cut the building in half and go to 2, 3,500, or 3 and a 4, or something, where we made two buildings. So we looked into that. The cost to turn a building into two different tenants of, say, 3,500 each, or 3,000, 4,000, was about a million and a quarter to a million and a half dollars. Well, when you turn around and you put that into the, into our analysis, the rent we would have had to charge in Vista would have been exorbitant. It would have been twice as much as what the going rate is in Vista. So then you say, "Well, we wouldn't have been able to get a tenant." So we were kind of stuck. And through this whole process, we were unbelievably lucky. We found, we found the diamond in the rough in Raising Cane. And it was unbeknownst to us, Raising Cane had seen this site when they were doing their original investigation work, or their due diligence in California. They had pinpointed this site, did not contact us, we were, and they went out and they decided they were gonna open some other ones in Orange County, from what I understand. And after they started to have success, and they started to open their other stores, they came knocking on our door and said, "Hey, we like your site, this is a possible site for us." And it fit, because they wanted a ground lease, they wanted us to, they wanted to build their own building, so that's how we got to this point.
Okay.
It wasn't just, "Hey, let's go get, let's go get a drive-through."
Let's go slam a fast food place in there.
Exactly. It was a two-year process to get to this point. And I have detailed names in the list, if you want it, or you guys can share.
Yeah, no, I'd like to see it eventually, not right this second, obviously, but I definitely thank you for that information. That's all I needed from you. I do have additional, just kind of input on this. So I've lived in Vista for a very long time, and you can sit down, sir, unless anybody.
Could I just share one thing?
Please, go ahead.
Sure, sorry, while I'm up here. I, the reason I was a little late was I had to go buy a Rosati's. I have an email sent to me, printed up copies from the owners of Rosati, in support of that. I have an email for each of you, I can leave it here, and you guys can pass it out, but, or hand it up to here. But I just want to make sure you guys saw that.
Thank you. I've also spoken with the owner, Eric. Eric and Eric, actually, there's two Eric's who own the Rosati's over there, and Steve, the general manager, and I know they are in support of this project. That particular end of that center was dead for a while. We had a California Pizza Kitchen in there, we had another Italian restaurant that went out of business there. Currently, we have a Rosati's that struggled with customer service, working real hard to kind of turn their name around and make it work, but that Dave, the famous Dave, has been vacant for a while. And what I'm hearing from everybody I speak with is that it's impractical to have that same exact use. There's just nobody who wants that particular use. The other thing is that I kind of liked about Raising Cane's is it didn't seem like it's your standard fast food place. I'm a guy that when you talk about community, it tugs on my heartstrings. And to think that over 16 months in Costa Mesa, they've invested $75,000 back into their community. We have so many community organizations here that they could help. I also have four kids, 16, 18, 14, and 10, and I work tons, and I don't have time to cook for them all the time. Right now, we choose between Kentucky Fried Chicken and El Pollo Loco. And if we want decent chicken, we drive to Quarry Creek, which is off of College, anyways. I've had some Raising Cane's in Louisiana before, I'm a fan. I just want to make sure that our city knows that we do a lot of investigation before these items come to us. And when we're looking for businesses for our community, businesses that want to be woven into the fabric of the community are the type of businesses that we want. And if they, you know, make that end of our shopping center hustling and bustling, next thing you know, El Caia Hone, the old El Caia Hone's gonna be full, Poki Poki's in there, it's gonna get more people in it. And that's what we want. We don't want to have tons of vacant restaurants and non-performing assets within our city. We want it to look like a good, vibrant city, and I feel like that's what Raising Cane's brings to our community. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We talked a little bit about the building and the difficulties that you've had with the building sitting vacant, because it was such a large building, and you talked about people not wanting to take such a large building, or splitting it in half, et cetera. But here we have Raising Cane's, who is actually just gonna demolish the whole thing and start over, which I've always thought was an option for people to do. So I'm not sure that the argument about the size of the building is relevant anymore to this discussion. And I really like the idea of having Raising Cane's in Vista. I'm just not sure this is the place to do it, to amend our downtown-specific plan, to amend yet another plan that we put into place. And I see, you know, I've lived in Vista for 25 years, a native San Diegan, and have been coming to Vista to work, and to dine, and to entertain, long before I moved here 25 years ago. And when we built that whole area, that was a promise to our citizens and to our community about what we were gonna put there, and what the vision for Vista was. And it was more sit-down restaurants. We do have a lot of drive-throughs in Vista, and three already in this area. And so I see this, I would love to have Raising Cane's in Vista, just not here, because I see this as breaking a promise to Vista. And I don't want to do that. And I think that with all of the development that's happening in town, I think that we do have the, we, I do see that we have the ability to, another year or so, if not sooner, to attract another restaurant into that area, and maybe find another location in Vista for Raising Cane's, because I don't want to see us go down that road with this area. I'd like to see us have a restaurant, another restaurant there. And if the building size is an issue, perhaps the next person who wants to look at it is also willing to demolish and start over. So this is, this is a hard one, but I see the, I remember the promises, I remember the discussion that we had, and I don't want to go back on that promise at this point. So, thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A question for staff. How long ago was the downtown, this area, how long ago was that developed the plan?
The downtown plan that is currently in place was approved in 2010.
2010, okay. And originally, when, I guess my question should have been rephrased, when we designed the then Kirkorian, the other shops, and the restaurant pads that are there, empty at this point, how long ago was that?
It was in like the early 2000s, when we designed the center, 2001 or '02, if I remember correctly.
We actually designed it when I ran for council in 1998.
I mean, it was in the works before that, but yeah, construction happened right around.
Construction happened later, but that.
Okay. Kind of just trying to get an idea how long it's been that, you know, we've got empty restaurant spaces, which at this point have been repurposed, and I understand that, you know, we have plans for a reason, but when you have plans that are nearly 20 years old, things change, you know? I'm sure half of these people here were probably not of voting age, that when these things were actually developed, and these ideas came up, and, you know, I admit it, I'm getting older, and the things that I thought were pretty, pretty good idea 20 years ago, maybe are outdated at this point. And things change in business. I'm in business myself, advising clients on financial decisions. And sometimes we deal with REITs, which sometimes deal with these types of properties and issues as well. And I know that the business climate has changed considerably, and as Mr. Green was discussing earlier, families are getting younger, busier, they've got kids that are taking a soccer, or baseball, or just picking up from school, and they don't always have time to sit down and cook a meal in the middle of the week, you know? I know even at our house, it's a struggle, too. So I thought about it a lot. I know that our original plan was to have nice restaurants throughout our Vista Village area, and I think Cane is a nice restaurant. It's just a different, more affordable restaurant, and meeting the needs of Vistans today. And I learned to accept that I, myself, and probably some other people here in Vista, we're not the chicken cordon bleu, you know, type. We probably are closer to the chicken fingers. We have that a lot at our house, as well.
Yeah.
So I think this is a good fit for Vista. I really like the discussions we've had with Raising Cane, and the fact that they're want to be involved in the community, they strive as part of their culture, and giving back, the fact that they're willing to give back, whether it's 5,000, 10,000, or 75,000, like they did in their most recent restaurant, to the community. You know, that's just, that's stuff that's probably gonna go back to our Pop Warner program, or our Little League program, or Operation Hope, you know, and helping those people. So for that, I support this project, and I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Jay, could I ask you what the answer is in terms of, I mean, it was a decent question posed about whether there was another tenant that was willing to build a new structure that was smaller, like you described, a 3,000 or 4,000 square foot facility. What do you think the answer is?
My answer is, in our, in our world, that we had, what we talked about, and who we talked to, there wasn't another person.
Was that part of your discussion with the other restaurants, the idea of demolishing and building a new structure to suit?
Yeah, so, so there's a couple things going on here, right? There is, one, I don't want to get too much into the details, but, you know, Raising Cane, we now have a ground lease. This is on Raising Cane to build the building, right? And so you have to find someone that's willing to come in and do a ground lease, that is going to put money out to build a building, because they see the projection. I think at one point, and I think it was with you, John, we had a conversation about longevity, and the fact that, you know, raising, we needed someone, before we even knew Raising Cane was it, we had a, we had a conversation about longevity. We want someone that's gonna be there a long time. So, again, a benefit is, they're putting in a lot of money. I don't know if I'm, if I can disclose that right now or not, but they're putting in a lot of money, more than the numbers I've used earlier, to build a building. So, A, you have to find someone that's willing to do that.
Sure.
Which goes along with, they have to do their research to make sure that it's the right site, and it's the right area, and does Vista, can Vista support this, this idea? And so you start narrowing down a lot of people. And, you know, one thing I didn't get to say, or I didn't say I should say, is, I mean, what we do have here, we have a national credited tenant. I mean, that is, besides In-N-Out, probably the hottest fast food, casual dining name in the marketplace. It's new to California, but it's, it's very, very well-known, and very successful across the United States. We have someone that's gonna invest over $3 million in that site. So they're not, this isn't a one-year plan for them, this is a long-term project. We have probably the most sought-after concept, restaurant concept, that's entered San Diego in the last year. Everybody wants it. You guys got them. And I would say that you got the first one within San Diego, and obviously, they have more plans to broaden out, but they picked Vista. And obviously, they have more plans to broaden out, but they picked Vista, which is unique in the sense of, to answer your question, yes, there probably are other restaurants or ideas that might have looked to knock it down, but I don't know if they would have picked that site in Vista. They picked that site and they want to be in Vista.
Right. Thank you, Jay.
Sure.
You know, I'm also moved by the point that Councilman Aguilera made, which is, we had three vacant restaurant pads that were planned in the shopping center, and the reality is that here we are 15 or 20 years later, and we did not receive an application that was successful to build a restaurant facility on those three pads, and they have now been repurposed. And I think that does speak to the market's desire over a very long period of time to build restaurants there, and despite our best hopes. And I have to tell you, I'm kind of torn on this one. Raising Kane seems like a really fantastic restaurant that I really want in our community, and I really want to be a customer of. And so I'm excited that you're here. But where I'm torn is, you know, it does seem like we're losing, you know, a better upscale dining opportunity. But that being said, right now, I am leaning strongly towards supporting your request because it does appear, I'm actually impressed with the design of the inside of the restaurant, as I would compare this to other fast food restaurants on the inside. It looks like the investment you're gonna make in the interior is gonna support a community gathering place. I would ask you to bring us the finest restaurant that you've built in the state, bring us a really great plant, seriously. Bring us something, because this is a flagship location for our city. This is not out of the way for us. You're getting location number one in Vista. Honestly, I mean, this is, and as you move your building much closer to the street, this is gonna be a very highly visible restaurant. That's something I want to point out. We're getting closer to the street here, which is good for your business. You need to be more highly visible. But I really want to ask you to bring us the best restaurant you've ever built in the state of California. I think you're gonna do really well here, you know, and I think you got a lot of future patrons in the room, and we're excited about it.
Okay, so I have a motion. I need a second.
Yeah, and they're getting hungry, so we need a second.
A second.
There is no, there's no motion, just direction.
Oh, just direction?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, okay. So, do you have direction enough, then?
Yes, we do.
Majority support.
Thank you.
I'll be supporting the motion. Eat chicken. Good. Okay. So with that, we are going to move on to our last issue of the night. Okay, now, look, there's a lot of us out here, so I just want to remind you, you're not at a ballgame. I'm gonna remind everybody that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum in the meeting and conduct themselves in a courteous manner. And that includes clapping after every, no clapping after every speaker. We have, I'll show you the number of speakers. Thirty-seven speakers here, okay? Each get two minutes, okay? So...
Madam Mayor, could I just say one thing? You know, we had, I don't recall even the issue, I actually, I probably do, but we had an issue with the clapping and applauding, and I'd just like to point out that this is a public meeting where all who have come to be heard will be heard. And the reason for the no applauding and the no yelling is so that everybody feels that they have a fair opportunity to be heard. This is not a rally. This is a public hearing, and everyone will be heard. But I just wanted to make that comment, that really, the policy of no clapping and no yelling and no cheering is about giving everyone a fair opportunity to be heard and about everybody being a fair opportunity to be listened to. So I just wanted to underscore that.
Yep, I was gonna say that, so thank you.
I apologize to take that.
No, that's okay. We're all in agreement, so. And then also, because there's so many speakers, we're gonna limit it to two minutes for each speaker. So, and so with that, I'm going to, our discussion item is on the medical marijuana dispensaries, and Councilman Green has requested this item to be put on the agenda, so I'm gonna ask him to introduce the item. So, Councilmember Green.
All right, I prepared a written statement, just to make sure I get everything out there. I'm gonna go ahead and pass it out to the members of the council. They can see exactly what I'm gonna be stating to the, to the members of my city who showed up for the council meeting tonight. So I have introduced this item for discussion, medical marijuana dispensaries and legalization of such. Good evening, Vistans. I'm presenting the topic of legalized medical marijuana dispensaries in an effort to be proactive with policymaking within our city. As you may know, recreational marijuana is recently on the ballot as Prop 64 and was passed by Vista voters with a 57% approval rate. This vote gives us a clear indication that the Vista voters have a favorable opinion on marijuana. As public representatives and elected officials, it is our responsibility to represent the interests of our voters, which sometimes requires compromise. With recreational marijuana being approved by our voters, I can only assume any medical marijuana initiative on the ballot would pass with more favorable numbers. Having all of this information before us and knowing that we need to be proactive for the citizens of Vista, I sit before you this evening proposing safe, reliable access be provided to the residents and patients of Vista. The current Citizens Initiative has gathered over 7,000 signatures, but it does have several guidelines that I feel are bad for our city and citizens, one of which is spending $350,000 of the taxpayers' money on a special election. With the information we have, our citizens clearly feel medical marijuana has become more socially acceptable or tolerable, and I would speculate that any initiative with the medical verbiage would pass with an overwhelming majority. With that said, as elected officials, it is our responsibility to propose a policy change to allow for delivery within our city limits in a reasonable amount of storefront locations based off of the number of prescriptions issued to patients or the total population. The specific number of dispensaries, excise tax, setback parameters from schools and churches will be thoroughly reviewed and researched by our city staff. I move that we, as a council, direct staff to come up with a proposal prior to the end of April to allow safe, reliable access in the form of delivery and limited storefront access within the city of Vista to be voted on and approved by our council. That is all.
So...
And I know that I made a motion, and I know typically when it's a discussion, you're not supposed to make a motion. I know we have 37 speakers as well, but since the motion is for them to come back with the policy, I was informed by staff that a motion was allowed. If after discussion we have support, it can be seconded, and they can be directed to come back with some type of policy that we can review in the future. Thank you.
I would second your motion, because I think that probably at this point, we need to have maybe a limited number of dispensaries, maybe, I don't know, I don't know how many. I'd like the staff to come back and recommend that to us, but...
But I don't want it to be mandated by the state or mandated by a ballot before we've had any time to research. So, I figure that if the staff comes up with a reasonable number, we can start with that reasonable number. If it needs to increase, it can increase, but there's no need for other people to make our decisions for us as a city. And that's why I've proposed this discussion item for the evening. Thank you.
Okay, so I second that. Do anybody else have any comments, or do you want to hear all the speakers? Okay. Okay, speakers, here we go.
Unless you just don't all want to speak.
Thirty-nine now. Okay, so here we go. We're gonna start with, and I'll call the one person, and then I'll call the two following people. And if the one person comes up and the two following people will get up and stand at the side, so we can kind of keep them moving along. That'll be really appreciated, okay? So, and two minutes, and we want to hear what you have to say. So, we'll start with Timothy Bingham, or Biggum, and we'll go by, and then followed by Sergio Franco, followed by Dr. Kathleen Boyle.
Thank you. My name is Timothy Biggum. My wife and I purchased a beautiful home in Vista in January in Hidden Meadows, area code 92081. Mayor Ritter, council members, I am the managing partner for a live cannabis company, an affiliate of Spy Ridge Farms of California, one of the strongest organic medicinal cannabis co-ops in the industry. I'm here tonight to add our voice to a reliable, tested, up-to-the-minute cannabis industry information and benchmark experience to your decision-making arsenal, and to offer a civic-driven proprietary business model for dispensing cannabis products to patients and their caregivers within our city limits. We present this as a viable alternative for our city council to this bull rush attempt to commandeer the voted-upon processes of municipal ordinances and measures. No one in this room respects the power of public initiative more than I do, but this process is not needed here. We at ACC have started proprietary surveys for our own groundwork, and this consensus percentage has already surfaced. The citizens of Vista, your constituents, have confidence in you. They have confidence that you will use your talents, your hearts and minds, to craft this piece of legacy legislation for the benefit of every possible way for the city of Vista and its constituency, and to lead by example for other cities and other states to follow. Please look for my introduction email on your city government email addresses. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sergio Franco, followed by Dr. Kathleen Boyle, followed by Marie Chester.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to show up today and speak. I wanted to address a couple of issues, I guess. I like the fact that Mr. Green, you know, is with pro-medical marijuana. Due to the fact that Vista is an agricultural community, there could be so much more for medical marijuana in this city. I would say something similar, close to like the Napa of marijuana. We have the perfect environment to grow year-round, as well as the beautiful environment in Southern California that provides vacation, people to come in and spend. If that's what Vista ultimately is looking for, if they're looking for, you know, not just shops limited to like corporate people, or, I'm not even gonna say corporate, because right now, most of the people that are kind of, got things going are the pre-Ico shops in like LA that have been doing, you know, growing and doing their dispensaries for a while now. They've been in that, they've been given that opportunity to grow in LA. I don't know if you guys, you know, have did your research with LA and the pre-Icos. They're limited, but they're gonna be opening them up with Proposition M. Right now, Vista has the opportunity to pretty much also implement their agricultural community as well with the dispensaries. The guidelines when it comes to medical marijuana requires for you to grow it and sell it as well. Each medical marijuana collective is supposed to be growing their own and selling their own. So you gotta take that into consideration as well. As well as allowing shops, you should also be thinking about allowing cultivation. We have a lot of strawberry fields out here, a lot of empty land that can be used to be cultivated. So, I just want to kind of, you know, throw out a little different idea out there, supposed to just thinking dispensaries, thinking, okay, let me just do retail, retail. There's cultivation of it, manufacturing of different products like edibles, CO2 cartridges, which are easier to vape, you're not smoking, so it's not a carcinogen, which are...
Your time is up, sir.
All right. Well, I appreciate the time, just a little idea.
Thank you. Dr. Kathleen Boyle, followed by Marie Chester, followed by Jen Bartlett.
Good evening. I have a PhD in psychology, and I worked for many years in drug abuse research with people who are severely addicted to heroin, crack cocaine, regular cocaine. And for these people, their extreme drug use had caused them to lose homes, families, and jobs. I actually found them on Skid Row and hospitals and jails. Most admitted to property crime, sex work, other things they were ashamed of, but that they resorted to, to solve their addiction problems. Never did I see one person who was homeless because of marijuana. I didn't see a person who committed criminal behavior because of marijuana. Prop 15 has been, has been on our books for over 20 years, and we've seen how useful it is for so many conditions. A study I did in LA of people with AIDS, people were using it because they were nauseous. And one man told me he was tired of fishing his pill out of his own vomit so he could take it, because it was keeping him alive. People with cancer, for pain, for nausea, and also for mood at end of life. One of the things about dispensaries over a delivery system would be that in a dispensary, a person would know, the seller would know the different strains. And people who are using marijuana medically don't always want to get high. They want the pain to go away, and those are two different cannabinoids. So you would want a lower THC with a higher other cannabinoids that would help your pain. So a person who was there could help you with, make those decisions. With, as with alcohol and prescription opioids, of course, there must be abuses. So I'm sure there is somebody who's totally well-bodied, who's going in to get medical marijuana, although I don't know why. I was, I just retired from Cal State, wrong city, Cal State, San Marcos. And I would ask my students, why don't you get medical marijuana? And they would say, it's cheaper on the street and easier to get, and they can get it at the age of 14, so...
Your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Chester, followed by Jen Bartlett, followed by Chris Hart.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Marie Chester, and I would like to support the, as in favor for marijuana to be here in Vista. I am disabled with psychosis problems, and I took in pharmaceutical drugs that was prescribed by my doctor. And through the time I've been treating myself with pharmaceutical treatment, it caused me to also have other, you know, medical problems such as infections, hair fallout, more severe depression, because when you keep, when you keep increasing your Seracel, then what happens when you become immune to it? And also being taken Ambien for insomnia. All those prescription causes organ deterioration in the long term. So, for people who want to smoke marijuana, it should be a freedom of choice of how you want to self-medicate yourself and not being prosecuted as a criminal crime, because you want to choose as a freedom of right to choose how to, choose how you want to medicate and self-treat your symptoms. People who are dying should have a better quality of life if they're gonna leave this world. And if they choose to want to smoke marijuana instead of gaining more side effects from pharmaceutical treatment, then people should have the freedom to choose how they want to live, since this is what this country is based upon, a freedom of choice of how to live. And if people want to live to choose to smoke marijuana to, you know, give comfort because they're about to die from HIV or cancer, then they should die in peace and in comfort, not being forced because some doctor told you, you have to take Seracel, you have to take Giedon. If I brought in a couple of magazines today, and you went through all of them, and they're advertising, all these pharmaceutical companies, entire advertising all these prescriptions, you could see all the side effects weigh heavy more than the treatment.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, John Bartlett, followed by Chris Hart, followed by Marie Strain.
My name is Jonathan Bartlett. I'm a registered pharmacist in the state of California, and I thank the city council for opening up the microphone on this important discussion tonight. I would like to briefly go over a couple of the medical history aspects of it. There's been a lot of misconceptions regarding addiction and misuse and abuse over decades and decades, mainly starting in the early 20th century. This politicization of the substance has hindered research, so therefore, a lot of the answers regarding medical use, we don't have the answers yet, because research has been hindered. The medical use is interesting because it's newly recognized, and it is a true grassroots movement, no pun intended. It is coming from the patients. It is never before, to my knowledge, has a drug use come from the patients up, not from drug companies down. So there's an important research history that needs to be validated through additional research. I stress focusing on the patient. Medical uses briefly, there's important medical uses that have emerged during this period. Glaucoma, for one. The American Glaucoma Society put out a white paper, it's on Google, and you can see where they acknowledge that it works. However, more research is necessary, and they're not saying patients to discard your glaucoma medication and start using marijuana. PTSD, I think there's a well-documented history there of patients getting benefit. However, this also needs more research. Seizures have been documented, and there's a drug company in England, I believe, doing clinical research right now for seizure control. And it is a well-known appetite stimulant, as mentioned by the physician previously. Chronic pain treatment is huge. Patients that use it are not holding back whatsoever and letting me know, when I counsel them, that they're doing with Norco, they're doing away with other drugs just mentioned, and they want to use edible at night.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Hart, followed by Marie Strain, followed by Kyle, this is like Menkenny.
Thank you, members of the council, for allowing me...
Thank you, members of the council, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Chris Hart. I'm a resident of Vista and I've been a registered nurse at Tri-City Emergency Department for the past 17 years. I have two important jobs as a nurse, keeping patients safe and advocating for them. I am here to advocate for patients who wish to use medical marijuana instead of the standard narcotics currently prescribed and over-prescribed by doctors and providers nationwide. I have seen and spoke with patients, with people and patients who use marijuana, and I have found authentic control of symptoms such as pain, nausea, anxiety, and seizures. One such child went from having dozens of seizures a day to only having a few a day since starting on a marijuana lixer called Charlotte's Web. To her parents, this drug was life-saving and life-changing for their child when traditional anti-seizure medicines failed. I have cared for very ill patients with cancer, HIV/AIDS, end-stage diseases, and chronic pain syndromes. There is nothing worse to see an actual patient who is dying or in excruciating pain. Those patients deserve access to medical marijuana if they choose that for pain control and treatment of symptoms. They have a right to an alleviation of pain. What I see repeatedly in the emergency room on a consistent basis is accidental prescription narcotic overdose. I wanna stress that, prescription narcotic overdose, sometimes to the point of death. These are things such as Oxycontin, Dilaudid, Fentanyl, Norco, and many others. If you have any doubt as to what I'm saying, please talk to the Vista paramedics because they are brothers and sisters in this same fight and they see a lot of this as well. I assure you that medical marijuana is not the evil in this community. And I understand that change can be hard, but we must change as a society. We must send a message that medical marijuana is the right choice for so many people. There is the stigma that medical marijuana dispensaries are hurtful and harmful when in reality, what I have seen is to the contrary. They provide an invaluable service to members of the community who wish to choose how they are treated medically. These patients and families have a right to decide what course of treatment they receive.
Your time is up.
Thank you so much for your time.
Sorry. Okay. Marie Strain, and she's followed by Kyle Menkeney, followed by Matt Menkeney.
Hello, Mayor Ritter and council member. My name is Marie Strain. I reside in Vista. I became a patient advocate when a family member died, died of a terminal illness. But he didn't die of the illness, he died of the pharmaceutical that promised him a cure. He was doing very well in the medical marijuana regimen until he was promised the cure. And once he went in there, he died less than two months. So I became angry, but I said, you know what? I'm an entertainment person, I can get, gather people together in a room of people, and maybe we can do some rally. In 2004, we went in front of City Hall in San Francisco, which we call the Cannabis Freedom Day. The Proposition 215 was passed in 1996, but we were saying, where's the license to have this medical dispensary? We don't wanna meet the people in the dark alley with some turkey bag in the back of a trunk. We want testing done on our product. We want quality products so that the people who are ill can get this medication. There was a study in UC Davis recently where they tested a bunch of marijuana meds from different places, and 100% tested for mold and 90% bacteria. So I say this to you, if you're gonna have a medical dispensary in our city, please at least govern that medical portion part of it, because it's very important for the patient, just like all of us that go to CVS and get our meds. That medication was tested by someone. You don't wanna, in the dispensaries, just get it from some blowjob down the street. Implementing this law will help clean up the situation. There is legalization of cannabis sales alone is 53 billion total, but only 6.7 billion is legal in North America. That means there's a lot of room for growth. So Proposition 64, California will sure have the severe impact of cannabis economy. And Vista could be the epicenter of that movement. You guys could set the new rules and regulation. Therefore, I propose that you guys have a cannabis commission regulation.
Okay, your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Menkeney, followed by Matt Menkeney, am I saying that right?
It's Menke, and Kyle yields his time to his daddy.
Okay, that's okay. So this is both three together, okay.
Okay, I too am a concerned parent and father in the community. I've lived here as long as all of you. I also have four children. I don't start off with my 16 or my 18-year-old. I noticed you have a favorite. You started with 16, jumped to 18, and dropped back down. Don't make it so obvious. So there, there needs to be no study. You guys have somebody from right here in Vista that you guys probably recognize, because all my other children are on activities, Pop Warner. We took a hard hit this last year, but we raised a lot of money for Pop Warner regardless, and we sit kids to the best of the West. My son was there with that group. My daughter's 24-years-old, she lettered eight times at Vista High. She brought three CIFs to Vista. As a concerned father, my main concern is not about mold, it's about seizures. I can definitely, I would love for the regulations that the last guest to be on all these things, but it doesn't happen quick enough for a kid like Kyle Menke. Kyle was having, we've been with Kaiser Permanente our whole life, his whole life, 18, 19 years. And we love Kaiser. They've given him over 20 surgeries that have been life-changing. One of the things that they could not change is his seizures. He's had 300 to 20 a day up until he was about 15-years-old, 15 and a half. At that point, they told us there was nothing more that they could do for us. As a loving father and with favorites, too, I love all my kids, but it's hard not to, you know, have a special feeling for one. I wasn't willing to give up. We traveled to do hyperbaric chambers, we've done everything. We've spent my entire life and everything I've ever made trying to make his life better. Through CBDs, he had gone from 30-plus seizures a day down to, so that was Kyle's time, 30-plus seizures a day, down to no seizures for the first year, and he has one or two a month now, based on whether his digestive tract gets backed up. He gets fed through a Mickey button and he gets his, he gets his cannabis through a syringe, so he has a feeding tube. I have no problem with the regulations, I wish it would come quicker. Our problem in the community and all the other cities that you see as a city council members, everybody plays kick the can. They just kick it on down the road and they give it to the next city council they deal with. Guys like this kid suffer because of that. He needs to be heard by you guys. He needs to be able to have safe access. Luckily, we were able to find somebody here in Vista, and for the last two years, he's had a small amount of seizures, the last two and a half years, a small amount of seizures, reduced to, you know, a couple a month, thanks to CBDs. There are 60 cannabinoids and 300 compounds in cannabis, in marijuana, medical marijuana. And in combinations, they can do different things. There is one type that stops his seizures, one type. And I had somebody that was knowledgeable enough to be able to find that type and get it to a format to where he gets his eight mils in the morning, six mils at lunch, except for the school district now says you can't give it to him at lunch, so we have to travel to school to give it to him, which brings up safe access. I mean, how far do we have to go to get him medicine? Clearly, his change, I don't need a study from England. I know, as my son, you know, a witness to my son's life and seeing him have 300 seizures in one day and almost dying, that I know he has a seizure.
You know, I appreciate it. I think, I think you've done your four minutes.
Okay.
But I appreciate, I appreciate all you said.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. James Casio, followed by Joy Kincaid, followed by Karina Contreras.
Thank you, city council, for hearing us. Thank you, Mr. Green, for bringing this thing up and being proactive. I lost my sister in 2010 to cancer. I watched her, here in California, use medical cannabis to alleviate a lot of her symptoms. She was sleeping, eating. When the doctors told her she couldn't travel, she traveled to the Dominican Republic to swim with dolphins and all utilizing medical cannabis. In 2009, when the tumors weren't shrinking, they decided to go to New York to get experimental treatment. And in New York, where cannabis is so against the law, she was unable to get it, where she would have to go to the streets and get it from, you know, on the streets in bad places out in New York. When she passed in 2010, I started doing a lot of research on cannabinoids and CBDs in particular, and started working with different families here in Vista. I have two children also, both all gone to the magnet schools here in Vista, and I am too concerned about, you know, our children and them having access to cannabis. But unregulations and not having regulations is gonna be one of those ways for children to get it. It's one of the most easiest things to obtain on the street right now. We need to have dispensaries and places and facilities that Kyle can go to. I've been working with Kyle now since he was 15, and the change with his family has just been amazing. And other families, you know, I see it, they just want relief. Families are coming and just trying to find relief, but they shouldn't have to drive to Chula Vista, they shouldn't have to drive to La Mesa, they shouldn't have to go into neighborhoods where they're unsafe and they're not known. They should be able to be here in Vista and get it here from Vista and bring the tax money here to Vista. CBDs are huge. I submitted 180-page documentation to the council that was found on PubMed, talking about the endocannabinoid system and how cannabis and cannabinoids work within the system. Please take some time and read that. Take some time and go over it. It talks about all the different illnesses that cannabis helps out with and cannabis help out with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Joy Kincaid, followed by, it looks like Karina Contreras, followed by Justin, just a minute after me here. Justin, it looks like Hoyer? Oh, you know, okay, sorry.
Hi, my name is Joy Kincaid. I'm actually a resident of Oceanside, but my mother lives here in Vista in a wonderful board and care. She was diagnosed with Alzheimer's about seven or eight years ago. I lost my dad to Alzheimer's 10 years ago. My mother was given, in her previous board and care, she was given an eviction notice because her aggression and her violence was so great that she was seriously injuring her caregivers. So she was given an eviction notice. I begged them, please let me try medical cannabis with her, and they agreed to it. The very first dose was a profound change. She calmed down immediately. This first picture that you see here is Christmas of 2013. That's my mother in the middle. That's her granddaughter, my niece, who is an RN, and that's me to her right, and I am experienced in home health care. My mother was not speaking. She had to be fed, she, someone had to give her something to drink, and to transfer her from wheelchair was a nightmare. The next picture you see was five months, after five months on medical cannabis. She was speaking, she could get up, move around the room on her own. She, her appetite was great, and she knows me. To this day, she calls me by name, and even if she hasn't seen someone in a while, she knows them, she knows their name. The third picture you see there is when she saw her great-grandchild for the very first time, and you see that there is interaction. The life has come back to her. That's, my time is up?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, and I really appreciate that you are going to be making safe medical cannabis available to the community and to my mother.
Thank you. Okay, Karina, followed by Justin, followed by Mark Woodard.
Hello, Mayor Ritter and council members. Thank you, Joe Green, for bringing this to the agenda. My name is Karina Contreras, and I wanna discuss two items. I came to the Community Safety Commission and I just want to let everybody know that according to the sheriff, we are at a 20-year low for crime. My concern is that the word "limited storefronts," we need to make sure that it's not so limited that we're not allowing people to access it on a need-be basis, especially when it comes to medical issues that, you know, aren't set on a certain schedule. The other thing that I want to bring up, I'm a local farmer and looking at, you know, permaculture at this time, but in the future, it would be nice, Vista being so agricultural, San Diego County being number one in the nation for amount of small farms, that we definitely need to jump on this opportunity to grow medical marijuana and to do it in a quality way. It's really an economic issue. We need to have an engine here in Vista, and medical marijuana would be great for that, especially because we're surrounded by biotech, so we could start putting all these pieces together. So I really do appreciate you guys bringing this up. Obviously, the community is in favor of medical marijuana and safe access to it, so thank you very much, and that'll do it for me.
Thank you. Okay, that'd be Justin, right, followed by Mark Woodard, followed by John Byram.
Hi, my name's Justin Honeycutt. I appreciate your time. I just wanna go on record and say, at 16-years-old, it was 97, I was diagnosed with epilepsy. I was varsity on the baseball team, and I was junior varsity on the football team in my junior year. After being in a coma for a month, when I came to, I was told I was, I had epilepsy and that was my diagnosis. For the next five years, I tried everything. I had the top neurologist in Southern California, Dr. Maong Ong, and I tried every medication there was, Dilat, Phenobarbital, Depakote. It was a combination of those three that finally kind of helped my seizures from going, from a few grand malls a day to just one, or Pedemol seizures, which is just a smaller grand mall. For five years, we continued to try and try, and I couldn't go to school anymore because I was, that next year, because I was so medicine-head, I couldn't wake up in the morning, I couldn't stay focused, I was all over the place. And late in my senior year, I discovered marijuana, and, which my friend brought me, brought it to me, and it changed my life. Within that first week, I went from grand malls every day to Pedemols. The month after, I was having Pedemols once or twice a week, which was, it changed my life. I had to quit my job, I had to do homeschool, and without marijuana, I wouldn't be where I am right now. I work every day, I have a family of five, which I support solely, and without having marijuana or safe access to it, I don't know how I'd be able to do what I do every day. I don't know how I'd even have made it here. With those three medicines, have you've heard from people before me, they'll wreck you. You take Dilat and Depakote and Phenobarbital every day, and your intestines are, you know, your insides are gonna be a mess. So I hope that you guys see that there is huge benefit, not just epilepsy, not just what you've heard today, but thousands of other examples, and we need our safe access. Right now, you know, living in Vista, I don't have any safe access, so, okay, appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you. Okay, Mark Woodard, followed by, okay, guys, followed by John Byram, followed by Craig Balbin.
Madam Mayor and council, thank you very much for your time. First of all, I'd like to say, my name's Mark Woodard, and kinda going back to about the time you were running for council. In 1999, I had, just turned 10 in May, and went to a buddy's mine, and growing up in Utah. Starting off the summer as well, we went out running around in the hills all morning, about mid-afternoon, followed him into his older brother's room, and he pulled out a .10 gauge shotgun, not knowing it was loaded, turning around, slapping it, pointing it towards me. I looked at him, looked at the wall, and that was the last thing I saw, was that blue wall. The shotgun had went off 10.5 inches away from my left temple, had blown off the whole right side of my face. Thanked the Lord and medical science, spent the next month in the coma, three months in the hospital, and 11 months getting surgeries done. They were able to put Humpty Dumpty back together all right, but with some of the side effects and scared of Big Pharma drugs. Now that I was down two senses, I did not wanna go and handle life, knowing that I was gonna be detrimentally a zombie on Big Pharma drugs. So at a very young age, I was introduced to medicinal marijuana for my head traumas, sleeping, insomnia, and inflammation problems. To this day, I still use it, and due to that, I am an asset to society and not detrimentally a zombie. I can go out, work, be independent, be totally blind, and being able to help one another out and be, again, that asset to society. I wanna be able to live in a city that has better safety and greater access, and already being able to experience this, living in the greater development of downtown Vista, which I'm very appreciative of. I know that Vista will take consideration in this and making it better safety and services for everybody in Vista, and that we can all... which I'm very appreciative of. I know that Vista will take consideration in this and making it better safety and services for everybody in Vista, and that we can all be on the same page in public safety. Again, city council members, for someone not like myself, but for the 85% of people in Vista that use this for medicinal purposes, we would not be able to travel. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Okay, you guys, we still have a whole pile of speakers, so just kind of, if you could hold it down, I'd appreciate it. John Byram followed by Craig Balbin followed by Erica Leary.
Mayor Ritter, council members, my name's John Byram, I'm from North Coastal Prevention Coalition. I understand the difficult situation you are in. The initiative being circulated is not regulating marijuana shops. It actually is just the opposite. It would take away the city's ability to regulate or get rid of illegal shops by changing violations from a misdemeanor to an infraction, which is a $250 fine. A marijuana shop can pay this fine with its cells in a matter of minutes. This initiative is, well, if the city decides to create their own regulations, there will be illegal shops opening up also, so just like the city of San Diego and Los Angeles. The cost to regulate one of these shops is considerable. I would like to suggest that you request the Sheriff's Department's Licensing Department to come up and tell about the costs that they incurred regulating one marijuana shop in the outskirts of El Cajon. I have their contact information, and I've given it to your city clerk.
Thank you.
The last point, California Supreme Court ruled in favor of cities' ability to ban marijuana shops in the case Riverside versus Inland Empire Patients' Health and Wellness. And nothing in Prop 64 would change that. Actually, Prop 64 allows cities not to have any marijuana businesses. In Colorado, over 70% of the jurisdictions in Colorado do not have any marijuana industry. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Craig Balbin followed by Erica Leary followed by Ellen Bartlett.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I want to, my name's Craig Balbin, I am president of the, volunteer president of the Board of Directors for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, and our mission is to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs in our communities, in Vista, Oceanside, and Carlsbad through community action, collaboration, support, and education. And we work hard to educate the public and work with the public and work with our local elected bodies to ensure that, you know, not only marijuana regulations, prescription drugs are not abused, the alcohol regulations properly reflect the dynamics of the community and, you know, take in consideration that there are, you know, ways to regulate those alcohol outlets. And so as you look to develop some, potentially develop some regulations regarding marijuana dispensaries, I would urge you, implore you to also, you know, look at how you're regulating alcohol outlets and ensure that we are keeping our communities safe, that, you know, that dispensaries would not be close to schools, that they would be far from schools, that they would be far from our residential neighborhoods. And just as a key little piece of voter information, the city of Lemon Grove in 2016 approved Prop 64 with a 57% vote as well, but their local medical pot initiative had a 50.5% vote, and that seems to indicate to me, and you can see, there are other cities that had similar votes, where when it came time for medical pot initiatives to be on the ballot, for some reason, voters did not, either did not adopt them or did not overwhelmingly adopt them. So I'm not, I'm not convinced that any regulation on the ballot would pass.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Erica? Erica followed by Ellen Bartlett followed by Paula Colby.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'll try not to repeat my colleagues. I'm also with the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, I'm the program manager. Craig already shared our mission with you, and I'm sure you're very familiar with our goals, to prevent youth use of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs. And we are concerned because we know through decades of research that greater access and availability of drugs, regardless which ones, lead to greater use and greater problems, and that's why tobacco, alcohol, and prescription drugs cause more deaths than all illicit drugs combined, and that the taxes that we collect from these products cover just a fraction of the costs that they bring to communities. There's a lot of talk here this evening about regulation. I really believe you're in a bit of a bind because it's very challenging for cities to set up systems that will really regulate these dispensaries to ensure the quality of the products, who's getting access, how it's, that's not really under the city's purview. Hopefully, the state will make some progress as it moves forward with its licensing plans to take effect next year. But even in regards to that, with Prop 64, we now have, every patient, caregiver, and anyone over 21 can now legally grow, possess, and share and transport up to an ounce of marijuana without any legal consequences. So the storefront dispensaries really are about making money and making profits, and will likely lead to increased advertising and promotions, like these billboards that you see in the city of San Diego, where they do license dispensaries. Currently, all North County cities continue to ban storefront dispensaries. We've commended over the years Vista's leadership in enforcing the law against illegal sales of marijuana, and I feel the difficult situation that you're in, and I hope that you keep reducing youth access in the forefront of your decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Bartlett followed by Paula Colby followed by Mary Jo Poole.
Good evening, Mayor and City Manager and the council members. I live in, I live in Oceanside, but I do shop a lot in Vista because we're in East Oceanside. We're actually in the Vista School District, and I appreciate you having medical marijuana dispensables easily accessible for us. I have rheumatoid arthritis, and a lot of the drugs, I don't know how familiar you are, you can probably see a lot of TV commercials for them, but a lot of the rheumatoid arthritis drugs have a lot of, you know, detrimental side effects. And I take medical marijuana for pain with my rheumatoid arthritis, and it's very, very beneficial for me, and so I just want to tell you I appreciate when I can go into one of the dispensaries in Vista, spend my money, and, you know, feel safe in there. I've never had any problems, and so I just wanted to thank you for that, and I will not use up all of my two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Paula Colby followed by Mary Jo Poole followed by Joseph, it looks like Borsad.
Okay, we've lived in Vista for about 15 years. I'm a retired schoolteacher, and I have many friends and some relatives who depend on medical marijuana for support for various medical issues, including my daughter has a rare eye disease, and the CBD patch has helped her more than, been more effective than anything she's used for pain that goes along with this particular disease. And I just want to say that Dr. Sanjay Gupta, you know, the CNN medical advisor from Atlanta, Georgia, says that marijuana doesn't have a high potential for abuse, and there are very legitimate medical applications, and thank you for considering all this.
Thank you. Mary Jo Poole followed by Joseph, it looks like Borsad, followed by Beth Gladstein.
Hello, thank you, council, for bringing this very important issue, Councilman Jo Green, for bringing this important issue to light. In September of 2009, my husband was diagnosed with acute leukemia. For two and a half years, he endured the uncertain suffering and outcome of multiple rounds of chemotherapy and a bone marrow transplant. He passed away in 2012. During that time of uncertain suffering and outcome, it was marijuana that provided him certain relief to anxiety, to nausea, and a lack of appetite, and it provided it without further liver damage or side effects of the Marinol or opiates. In closing, it's my understanding that, as was said, I've cut this short for two minutes, in closing, it's my understanding crime in Vista is at a 20-year low. I wonder how much of this is due to the safe access has, you know, especially with opiate use? Why further criminalize marijuana, and why further criminalize our city? Please stop the raids, and please allow for safe access, because as long as you keep doing raids and you close down access, it drives it further and further underground, and it increases our crime rates. Economists in a recent Bloomberg Business Week estimates that marijuana is a potentially $100 billion industry, so why not embrace that industry, lead the way in North County and in San Diego County, provide for job opportunities and the fiscal rewards, and also in line with the needs of patients and the will of the electorate? So thank you very much.
Thank you. Joseph Borsad followed by Beth Gladstein followed by Sarah Lawyer.
I don't see Joe.
Oh, you don't see Joe?
No.
Maybe he left, okay. Then it'll be, are you Beth?
I'm Beth.
Okay, Beth followed by Sarah Lawyer followed by Christopher Descallos. Okay.
Good evening, council, thank you for allowing me to speak about this most important issue. My name is Beth Gladstein. I just turned 59-years-old, so why the heck am I telling you how old I am? I'm nothing short of a miracle. This is, for the last six years, I fought stage III C uterine cancer. III C means that it was in my lymph nodes. I was told when I was first diagnosed that I should learn to live with cancer because I could never, I could only hope for it to slow down. I did many conventional treatments. I did chemo twice, the second time it nearly killed me, I quit in the middle. I did radiation, I threw up the entire two, three months. I did a study, and then I got on this unbelievable, it was called a tumor blocker, it's supposed to block your tumor, it's the newest type of cancer treatment. I get treated at UCSD, the Cancer Moore Center, and I decided at that point that I had heard about cannabis, and I decided I would try cannabis, at the same time, I tried the tumor blocker. Well, I met with the woman that does the studies for the, for trials and studies, and she told me that my tumor blocker shouldn't be working alone, so she's, she thinks it's possibly the cannabis. So as time progressed, I got a CT, I found out that I, it was at 46%, my cancer had shrunk, but then I got taken off of the tumor blocker because my kidney, I now only have one kidney that works at 18%. But with that said, my doctor said to me, well, he knew I was doing cannabis, and he said, "Well, you should just continue with what you're doing." I continued with what I was doing, and I am now cancer-free. It's in my charts at UCSD. I'm sorry, I'm really sorry. It's a miracle, seriously.
Now your time is up.
Okay, seriously, but really, it's an important issue, and I'm not going to the streets to go look for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Sarah Lawyer, and I reside here in the city of Vista, been a homeowner for over 22-years, born and raised in San Diego County. I suffer from chronic pain resulting from multiple shoulder surgeries, the last of which in 1994 led to a total replacement stemming from a recurrent chondoblastoma tumor of the right humeral head. The surgery, a surgery that only years later, the titanium joint replacement that was used, was finally admitted to be too large and has worn away all the cartilage, leaving no rotator cup and me metal on bone. I have been advised by all surgeons in the last 10-years that another replacement surgery is not advisable and may actually lead to complete loss of the use of my right arm, and that I should tolerate the pain as long as possible. Pain medications, pharmaceuticals prescribed by physicians over the years have not worked, going from taking eight to 12 Ibuprofen to more harsh medications, to Vicodins, the Oxycotton, and finally, Oxycontin, which I thought on the one time I took it, I would die. Not only did it take, not take care of the pain, it made me feel incoherent unlike anything I've ever felt. I spent the next day in bed, and when I called my physician, they suggested that I would just get used to it after a while. I was dumbfounded, get used to it? Not a chance. These pharmaceuticals even cause bouts of major intestinal bleeding. Access to medical marijuana has been a blessing. While I can manage taking a leave during the day, there are some days when the pain is so unbearable at night that the medical marijuana reduces this, allows me to sleep, and leaves me coherent to be a productive citizen the following day. The stigma marijuana needs to change, and the access to this alternative medication needs to be available and safe here in Vista. So I ask you, Mayor, council, please allow for the regulated, safe access to medical marijuana dispensaries here in our city.
Thank you, ma'am. I have 20 speakers left. You guys all okay or need a break? Are we good, everybody, still for, okay, onward we go. Okay, Christopher, is it Descallos?
A fair approximation of my name. That's uncommon. I want to start out and thank you, everybody, for hearing us. I am a cancer survivor. In 2009, I had a lump on my throat, and I horsed around, and it got bad, so I had to go through a bunch of radiation treatments, and using medical marijuana made a big difference. Sometimes I was still nauseous after I used it, but my mood was good. Dr. Boyle mentioned the benefit of marijuana for mood when you're sick and you're, you know, you're thinking the big questions. Well, I got lucky, and the big questions didn't come down to me, but marijuana really helped me. I also want to just say that I'm a property owner across the street from a local dispensary, The Laughing Leaf. I live right behind the Little Caesar's there at Oak and East Fist Way, and since the dispensary has been there, I've had no complaint about them. I've seen no problems come out of there, no issues other than maybe minor traffic issue. The problem we have in our neighborhood is cheap alcohol, the Steel Reserve and the little bottles of vodka. There's a lot of mentally ill, homeless substance abusers up there, alcohol is their substance of choice, and they cause a lot of problems in my neighborhood. And finally, I'm a retired police officer. I served in law enforcement. I had no problem with marijuana. There are a few of us, and it's growing, think marijuana regulation and prohibition was very wrong. So I belong to a group that supports legalization across the nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Robert? Okay, remember I talked about being respectful, you guys? So please, please don't do that. Robert, is it G, it looks like G.I.O.V., GIOV?
Cora.
Okay, followed by Mike Justice followed by Beatrice Chavez.
My name is Robert Gore, and as we all have differing opinions, I do not believe this is an issue of a community divided in its concerns and questions. This is issue, this issue is not about personal opinions of cannabis or cannabis businesses, but what is best for the community as a whole. Both of my parents were stricken with disease, my father with cancer, and my mother had multiple sclerosis, which eventually took their lives. I watched as my parents turned into patients. Even at that age, I explored the benefits of cannabis for my parents. I'm a medical marijuana patient and advocate, but this is only my personal experience and reason behind my beliefs. We all have these reasons and personal beliefs, but this is not the issue. The issue is coming together as a community to properly regulate and educate the community on this industry. Serving patients their legal right to an alternative form of care is not harmful to the community if regulated in the proper way. The citizens are demanding for their legal right. Patients give their hard-earned money to these black-market businesses, then pay their taxes, they have the same businesses shut down and prosecuted. The reality is, people cannot physically, financially, or just not willing to travel the far distance to procure city-compliant cannabis products. This need creates the black market of dispensaries and delivery services. These black-market businesses will continue to thrive as long as the market is there, moving into wherever any landlord will let them. Citizens opposed to this issue are scared the businesses will open up next to their neighborhoods and/or businesses, increasing crime and exposing to their children to something they want no part of. Obviously, there is a ban in place already, and this has done nothing to relieve any part of this issue. More and more taxpayer dollars go into this industry, if knowingly or not, and there's been no beneficial outcome for any part of this community, only confusion and standstill. The only way to properly deal with this is to allow a certain number of city-compliant regulated businesses that can serve the need of the community and regulated businesses that can serve the need of the community and decrease the number of black market businesses.
Sir, your time is up.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry. Mike Justice, followed by Beatrice Chavez, followed by Justin Shields.
How you doing? I want to thank Councilman Green for bringing up this issue. It took a lot of guts to do it. I, actually, I want to thank everybody for being here on my birthday. I appreciate it.
You talk into the microphone so I can hear you?
So having said that, I'm actually taken aback by the stories that I've heard here tonight, which I came here strictly from a business side of it. You know, I understand the medical side of it, trust me, but I'm really taken aback by the stories that I've heard, honestly. But one thing I will say is that if you take the model like Desert Hot Springs, this is the kind of check that the City of Vista would be receiving every year, just from a conservative, you can't call it a tax, but use permit, $1.2 million of revenue. Instead, here's a bill, I don't know if I, who I should present this to, to the City Council for law enforcement activity and the City Council's sending law enforcement into dispensaries and raiding them at a cost to everybody sitting there.
Are you talking to us?
I'm talking to you, yes.
Okay, then you gotta look at us.
And so the bottom line is that with all of this going on, these raids going on, they're denying access to people that need medical marijuana. It's not the Wild West out there. If you've taken a chance and gone into some dispensaries, you would see that, in fact, they're clean, neat, organized, and the patients appreciate it. I would urge you to do the will of the voters as you are elected by the voters, and if I'm not mistaken, it was roughly 58%, 57% approved, and take action and put forth some guidelines that make sense so that people can have access, safe access, clean access, instead of buying it out on the street. I do, I do recognize the fact that everybody has a job to do. However, spending taxpayers' money on going into shops, vandalizing the shops, taking product, taking cash, and not accounting for it.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Because I can't talk, we're gonna take a break. So we'll take a few minutes break. Okay, if
How do I hear me?
Hello up there. If everybody will take their seats, we'll, we'll, I don't think they want it. If everybody will take their seats, we'll begin again.
You gotta be more forceful.
Everybody, everybody, take your seats. Thank you. I don't like to do that.
Joe Green.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Green wanted to say something.
Hello, Vistons. Welcome back to our City Council meeting. I just wanted to say something as the gentleman who put this on the agenda, you guys have all came up and thanked me for putting it on the agenda. Obviously, we respect what all of you are saying and we respect your opinions, we respect what's going on, and I just want to make sure that you guys respect the meeting. And the reason why we took the break was because of the applauding. And don't get me wrong, there are some statements I want to stand up and jump up and down and applaud as well, all right? But if 95% of the crowd is one way and 5% of the crowd is the other way, we still want to hear from that 5%. And the cheering could detour the opposed from speaking and we want to make sure that we have an informed decision and everybody is allowed to speak. So with that said, try your best to refrain from clapping. I know it's exciting. I too am excited. These are passionate pleas and it's very hard, but if you could just please respect the decorum in this room and allow us to finish the meeting tonight, we would greatly appreciate it. So thank you for that. No clap necessary.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, so here we go again. I think we have 18 speakers left. So we'll start with Beatrice Chavez, followed by Justin Shields is next, and after that will be Mike Wayman. Oh, I think you're not on.
Chavez.
Yeah, your microphone wasn't on.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
I was just telling you that Mike Wayman already went up.
Oh, oh, oh. Who went up? Oh, Mike did? Okay. Put that there. Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
So I have an image right here. First off, thank you for hearing me.
Speak right into the microphone so we can hear you, okay?
So this photo is from a recent law enforcement raid against a medical marijuana dispensary in Vista. How many well-armed sheriff deputies does it take to collect evidence of an alleged violation of a local Vista zoning rule? Is this normal procedure for local zoning violations? There's seven, there's seven sheriffs in there. If you haven't counted, there's still one over here. Should Vistons worry that SWAT will show up to their home for their shed built in the backyard without a permit? Should we be worried that the city is going to send a dozen sheriff deputies to bust down our doors for not mowing our lawn? Where does it stop? You can tell us that that won't ever happen. Clearly, the city is going overboard with using our tax dollars to enforce zoning regulations like you are fighting violent and dangerous criminals. Now that Vistons are learning more about what's happening, you're gonna have a hard time continuing this. Enough is enough. Stop these pointless raids and use the sheriffs to go after real criminals. As we all know, Vista has plenty of them to go after. That's all.
Thank you. Beatrice, that is Beatrice, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Justin Shields, followed by Mark, followed by Cassie Box.
Thank you. So this is what safe access in Vista looks like right now. Couple of patients handcuffed, trying to get their medicine. Here's a photo of unlawful detention of two medical marijuana patients during a recent raid carried out at the direction of the City Council. Being a medical marijuana patient is legal and has been for two decades in California. It is unbelievable that the City Council considers the elimination of medical marijuana one of their top priorities. Don't be stuck in the past. The voters of California and Vista approve of marijuana, especially medical marijuana, and it is time you do your job and carry out the will of Vista voters. I ask you to do your job. Direct the city attorney and sheriffs to stop raiding dispensaries and create a regulatory framework to allow safe access to medical marijuana in the City of Vista. Thank you.
Justin, are you, were you Justin?
Yes.
Oh, I just am doing this, okay. Mark Wertham, followed by Cassie Box, followed by Judy Perry. Is Mark here?
Yes.
Are you, are you Mark?
I'm just kidding. I'm not like you.
You're not Mark?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay.
What happened to paper notes? Okay, good evening, City Council members. My name is Mark Wertham. 1977 graduate of Vista High School. Go Panthers. Also, I've been a homeowner here in the City of Vista for nearly 40 years. So I pay attention to all the City Council races, the mayor's races, everything goes on in Vista. I pay attention to all of it. I voted every election and I investigate every council member to find out if they hold my views or not. I spoke to Joe Green before the, before the elections and talked to him specifically about this topic and I was very happy to hear about his response and his feedback on that. I was also very interested to hear Mrs. Mayor about how you seconded his motion since at the last meeting in November, you were one of the dissenting voices on the City Council. So I'm happy to hear perhaps you've taken another look at the, at the, at the measure or at the proposal to maybe open your eyes to see that your constituents want this. It's not a moral issue. It's not anything except for the right thing to do. The voters have said how they want to have this done. We voted for it more than one time. As Joe has mentioned here, let's not waste another $300,000 to get the vote that you know you're gonna get the answer for. And personally, next time I vote, Mr. Johnson, or Ms. Mayor, Mr. Aguilera, Ms. Rigby, Mr. Franklin, Mr. Joe Green, I'll be looking at that ballot and knowing that who is behind us when we ask their help. So a lot of this is gonna be, who's gonna be on the City Council next time the vote comes up? And some of you may or may not be here, and if you're here because you backed this up, we will be out there supporting you guys 100%. But believe me, if you're gonna be out there and putting behind these people, but you don't want to stand behind them, we're gonna be a lot of people out there finding other representatives for us to do the representative government that we have asked for and that we demand and that you owe us. So I've been in here a long time in Vista. I've owned businesses here a long time and we kind of pay attention to see who's gonna take care of our, the future of the city, who's gonna be leading from the front and who's gonna be leading from the rear. And I'm just curious to see which one of you council members will be the ones that'll be leading from the front for the rest of us, longtime Vista voters, property owners, business owners, the people that have voted for you or not. Not everybody here is a voter, but I am, so.
Your time is up. Time is up. Cassie Box, followed by Judy Perry, followed by Thomas Gardner.
Hello. Thank you very much for, for hearing our cries here tonight. I appreciate it. As Mark said, Mayor Ritter, I am happy to hear that in the beginning, you said that you might, you know, want a couple of dispensaries here and there, and I appreciate that because I'm a patient and I am so tired of getting my medicine and having to look over my shoulder. I am not drinking, I am not on drugs, but I feel like I have to look over my shoulder and I'm scared to death, to drive home from the dispensary to my house. I shouldn't feel that way. I really shouldn't. But no, I could go to the pharmacy and I could get my Percocet or I could get every other pain medicine that my doctor wants me to take. The problem is, is that I have so many side effects from it. It makes me sicker. The only thing that works for me is marijuana. Please let me relax a little bit. Let everybody relax a little bit. If you guys don't let this happen, the people behind you will. I mean, it is inevitable that this will pass eventually. So let's be leaders and not followers. I'm sure Vista can figure out a way to do something with the money they're gonna be making on this. Honestly, even if it's a drug program for high schoolers, let's do something positive with it. Please help us patients, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Judy Perry? Okay. Followed by Thomas Gardner, followed by Sarah, I think it looks like, G-U-I-N-A-N-Guenin?
Okay, Madam Mayor, and
Speak right into the microphone so we can hear you.
Here we go.
There you go.
And fellow City Council members, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to speak. I do not live in Vista, but I utilize, I'm a member of, I think, three of your dispensaries here in Vista. And, you know, I'd like to just say, you know, you've seen the faces of the people who use these services. You know, do I look like a criminal? I taught for Cal State for 20 years, you know? My first master's is in public administration, in this kind of stuff. And so therefore, I have concern. I mean, did you, do you guys see the photos of the damage? I mean, did you, do you guys see the photos of the damage that was done on these raids? It intimidates me as a patient, and I don't appreciate that. Okay, so, concern for privacy rights. Who has access to my medical records now? What are you doing with my medical records? Why was I not notified? Who's got access to it? What can you do with it? And why is it okay to make me feel intimidation for seeking out something that's legal? I think you should be in this new policy that you're thinking about, you should consider about whether or not patients should be notified, and what recourse they have, because you're getting involved in the middle of our private lives. Okay, with respect to a previous speaker who says, "Oh, well, you know, they'll vote on statewide measures, but on citywide measures, they'll backtrack." Well, you know, I'm pretty certain your city attorney will tell you 50% plus one is still a clear legal majority. Unless you can prove that there was something funky with the ballot, that's a legal majority, that's the will of the people, that's what we're here to represent. I think that these raids on dispensaries, like the ones I depend upon, are a form of intimidation, and they're to undermine the law and the will of the people, and I think that's not acceptable.
And your time is up.
Thank you so much. Please, I'm not a criminal. I'm not a derelict.
Thomas Gardner, followed by Sarah Guinan, followed by Jeffrey Brusseau.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Speak right in the microphone.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Tom Gardner. As one of your council members noted earlier this evening, things change, and they can change very rapidly. I'm a stage four cancer patient. I have metastasized prostate cancer. It's in my lymph nodes, it's in my body, it's in my spine, my shoulders, my femurs, in my arms. I've gone through chemo, and I've gone through radiation. Someone wanted to know what kind of people will be going to your clinic. I'm a professor of public policy and public administration, and I'm here to tell you that education is a function of differentiating. If you cannot tell the difference between a Doxin and a Great Dane, you do not know what size of doghouse to build. And if you have been educated on the reefer madness, and that you believe that the only thing you do with marijuana is smoke it and get high, then your education is woefully short for being able to make a clear public policy choice. I use marijuana. Do I smoke it? No. Do I get high? No. I use glycerin in a tincture. I use alcohol in a tincture. I use it in a capsule, and I use it as an ointment. I don't smoke it, and I don't think I can get a high from the ointment that I use on my feet for my neuropathy. Okay? I'm the face of a cancer patient who is dying. 50% of my treatment will be in pain regulation. How will marijuana help me? It will help me because it'll help me sleep at night. It will help me because my anxiety will go down. It will help me with my nausea from the, from the, already, the treatments that I've received, and the treatments that I will receive. But it also means that I can use codeine right now instead of tramadol. It'll mean that I can use tramadol instead of OxyContin later on. It will help me regulate my pain.
Sir, your time is up. I'm sorry.
That you, you have a choice here tonight. You can sell hamburgers, you can sell chicken, you can sell alcohol, or you can sell a dispensary, and allow a dispensary for the sale of medication for people who need it. That's your choice.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Sarah, is Sarah here? I don't see her. Oh. And she's followed by Jeffrey Brusseau, and followed by Chase Corey.
Hello, my name is Sarah Guinan, and I've lived in Vista for a few years now. I'm 24 years old. I'm a full-time student at Cal State San Marcos. I am a psych major graduating this May. Um, I'm in multiple honors programs, PSYCHI, I volunteer Alzheimer's Association, so I'm a pretty good-standing citizen. Unfortunately, I had an injury to my right knee. I tore my ACL, MCL, LCL, and meniscal tear in my right knee, and it's affected my life in, like, pretty much every single way. So the doctor prescribed me Percocets and approximately 500 milligrams and take Motrin as needed. Of course, I can get the Percocets like candy, no problem, but it's all bad for liver, long-term health, long list of side effects that I'm sure everyone knows by now. It makes me feel like a zombie, groggy, not myself. I can't focus on homework, I can't focus on daily activities, I can get nothing done. This was only with three perks to total that I've taken. I refuse to take them now. Also concerned because some family members have struggled with drug abuse. My best friend died from a heroin overdose. My uncles died from prescription overdose. My brother's currently struggling. Um, so the solution: medical marijuana helps my pain and stress go away without being incapable of performing life tasks every single day, including my homework, so that I can finish school and be a productive part of this society. I can focus on my papers, my projects, and I don't feel like a zombie, and I actually have a personality on it. The dispensaries, I love my local Vista dispensaries, especially Green Gopher, and their friendly staff. They are genuinely concerned with their patients' health and welfare. They do not treat my medicine as a sales job. Instead, they listen to my needs and suggest what will help my unique individual problem, instead of just give me Percocets that everyone takes that doesn't help my individual problem. If it wasn't for my local dispensaries, I would most likely be struggling with the choice between feeling drugged out all the time for the next year, but feeling less pain or maintaining my grades, my life, my personality, my clear-headedness, and my well-being, and my liver. So please just consider me and other people like me, who are peaceful, productive members of society, just trying to relieve symptoms from an unfortunate injury.
And your time is up.
Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Jeff Brusseau, followed by Chase Corey, followed by Gail Stanton.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff. Uh, my name is Jeff Brusseau. I'm a 20-plus-year resident of Vista. I'm here speaking in favor and support of a regulated cannabis industry. I've spoken to some of you in other venues in, in my support of this plant. I'm calling it what it is. It's cannabis. It's a plant. It's not a pharmaceutical. Believe it was put on earth by God to help all of these people that you've heard from tonight and countless others around the world. There's a reason it's the most-used plant in the world, and has been in existence and in use in pharmacopeia since the 1400s. There's a reason it's the fastest-growing industry in America. There's a reason that it's not, that the federal government holds patents for the medical applicability of cannabinoids. You've heard the testimony from countless people tonight. I'm here as a personal example. I have a family member who suffered from epilepsy. He developed it on his fourth birthday. Grand mal seizures were a regular occurrence. It's the scariest thing I've ever seen. As a parent, I was terrified. We sought the best medical attention we could get. We were bombarded with pharmaceuticals. None of them worked. It wasn't until we started using cannabis that we stopped the epileptic grand mal seizures immediately. Anytime there was an indication of a seizure, a little squirt of the magic oil would eliminate the seizure. My nephew did three tours in Iraq. Young, bright young man with his whole future ahead of him, he came back with severe PTSD. He went to countless doctors, took countless pharmaceuticals, was unable to work and function until he found medical marijuana. Day one, he was better. Day two, he returned to work. Today, he is a functioning member. I thank you for your time, and I would urge you to support not only dispensaries, but cultivation and manufacturing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chase Corey, followed by Gail Stanton, followed by Scott, uh, it looks like Reuben.
We hold these truths to be self-evident, that we are all created equal and endowed with such rights as life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It is my right as a human being to consume cannabis. It is my right as an American citizen to consume cannabis. We just voted in California, and it is my right as a Californian to consume cannabis. And you're taking that away from us. You are choosing to rob every single person here of the medicine and relief that provides them. You're not just robbing us, you're actually sentencing a lot of us to pain. And the worst thing about it is you have the monopoly. Vista is the only place still doing this in between San Diego and LA. I've actually tried to help with this, prevent this from happening, and I've met the people, tried to hand out flyers, tried to spread the awareness. Everyone I met couldn't help because they weren't from Vista. They were from San Marcos, and they didn't have any friends in Vista, and they were just now visiting Vista. You have the monopoly. You're arguing about setting up a restaurant or whatever before this? You want money, make it from the other cities that are coming here to get the money, to get what they want, to get the relief they need. I, I just got out of the hospital, the beginning of February, and I was in there for a full week. The painkillers that they made me take to get out of the hospital for being there that long, eight MGs of Dilaudid, which is the equivalent of heroin, which I know because they gave me Narcan as well, because I could go easily, go home, and kill myself accidentally, rather than just smoking a couple of bowls and relaxing for the rest of the weekend. That's the decision you're making, is to do me to that. Thank you. Good night.
Uh, Gail Stanton, followed by Scott Reuben, followed by Monae Shire. Who do I see? No Scott? Are you Scott? Okay.
Hi, thank you for having me here and everybody else here.
What is your name?
My name is Scott Reuben.
Oh, okay, okay.
I thought somebody was first, sorry. It's a hard act to follow. The amount of speakers that you've had here are extremely moving, extremely heartfelt, and there's some real medical value, which if you can't see here tonight, I don't know where else you would have seen it. There's not much else left to say, except that as far as the legalization seems to be the only option. You know, the prohibition of cannabis, as well as alcohol, did prove not to work for many, many years. As far as education, the safety, and the regulation, it seems to be the only possible option. What more else would you want to hear at this point would be my question back to the committee, um, as far as proof? Because these are not children, these are not kids partying at a college. These are adults, and most of them are using this for true medical use. If that hasn't been obvious, I don't know where else it could be. So, I'm under my two minutes, but thank you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, so Gail Stanton, she didn't ever, um, so she must have gone left? Okay, so she's not there. Okay, so Monae Shire, followed by Vincente Maldonado, followed by Jeff Pryor.
Hi, I'm Monae Shire. Thank you for your time tonight. Um, I hear, I have stood behind the dispensary walls. I help these people. I know what they're going through. I see people with cancer come in there, and I see them taking these small dosages from these bud tenders that know what they are talking about, who have researched these topics, who know the cannabinoids that they are giving these patients to help them with their certain issues. Cancer has, I mean, I'm sorry. Marijuana has been around to help so many different things, like cancer, and glaucoma, and hepatitis C, and the list goes on for the different things that it can help to treat and not even, or even cure. If we would just let it be here and let the people, please, just learn about it, and please just give these people the right to come into the dispensary and come and get their medication. Because I know what it's like. I have bulging discs on my back. I've fallen over from the pain throughout the day. I know what it's like to have to put a patch on my back. I don't seek to get high, I seek relief. And that's all that these people want. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Vincente Maldonado.
Thank you for taking time your evening to hear me out. My name is Vincent Maldonado. My family has been in agriculture business for over 35 years. They've been bringing produce, organic produce, to the state of California for over 35 years as well. Um, I see a big opportunity in Vista. Me being in this industry for my whole life, I see one thing in Vista that's their best climate all over the world, to, to generate the best medicine for, for our city and for our patients. And not only do I see a bunch of capital coming to Vista, but just to help out our patients and our people as well. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Pryor, followed by Mary Sue Miller, followed by Bill Jones.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Pryor. I'm a resident of Vista. I'm also one of the managers of the Medical Marijuana Recommendation Office. I have three offices around San Diego. On a personal note, I was diagnosed 17 years ago with stage-three melanoma, and was given less than a 10% chance to live five years. That was 17 years ago. A lot of the treatment that I went through, I used medical marijuana to be able to alleviate a lot of the pain that I was in, and a lot of the problems that came with the treatment. Being in the recommendation industry right now, I have literally dealt with thousands of patients. Cancer patients, people that are in great physical pain, social anxieties, on and on and on. And the only thing that works for them is medical marijuana. They have tried opiates, they have gone through hell trying to get over being addicted to opiates. They have not had any relief, and the only relief that they're finding is with this plant. The concern that I have at this point in time, again, I've been all over San Diego with this, the closest area besides Vista is down in Miramar and down into San Diego. There are no other legal places for people to go anywhere in North County. This is the only place. So, many of our patients come to Vista, spend a lot of money here in Vista, looking for some relief and looking for some help. The concern that I'm having is that the raids that have been going on lately have been discouraging a lot, a lot of people from going. They've been hurting a lot of the business. These people are not criminals. They're there to help people. I've worked with them a lot, I know what they're capable of doing, I know how well they work with patients, and I know what their heart is to help these people. Please legalize this here in Vista, so people in North County have a place to go, and they can get this without any fear of being arrested, and they don't have to go back to the black market on the streets. This is the solution for people. Greatly appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mary Sue Miller, says here Suzie. And then that's followed by Bill Jones.
Can I, can I bend this down?
Yeah.
Um, I'm here to...
So you talk right into it? Yeah, there he goes.
I'm here to advocate for medicinal marijuana and any other marijuana to be used. I have stage-four ovarian cancer. It was originally diagnosed late-stage III-C in December of 2003, and they gave me two, three months to live. I started using cannabis. Now it is metastasized, but it has given me 13 more years of my life. I can, I'm, I'm guessing I'm going to have probably another five. I go to full-on IV therapy, chemotherapy now, again, and it is metastasized now to my colon, my lymph nodes, and my stomach. Without marijuana, you know, to do edibles, I cannot eat, I cannot stop. I've got three hernias from vomiting so much just on the medicine they've given me. And they, they have no problem offering me 100 milligrams of morphine twice a day if I stop taking the marijuana. That's not happening. I, I just wish everybody would realize that some of us really need our medicine, and if it wasn't, I need to vote to how the dispensaries are making their money, and they're just wanting to make their money. These dispensaries, Green Gopher, Sugar Shack, CCW, have given me, out of my, their free pocket, no charge my medicine, because I am on a fixed income. I do not pay one penny. I bring them gifts because I can't take something for free, so I bring them candles, or incense, or food. But these people are not in it for the money, I guarantee you. They give my medicine for free. That's what I really think needs to be known. These people are there to help you, help us. They're, they're not in it for the money. These people are just compassionate people. That's the word I can use. They're the most compassionate people I've met in my whole 59 years of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Bill Jones. Bill Jones?
Couple items, because I don't wanna step on them, wow, it's weird hearing my voice. Hi, my name is Bill Jones, thank you for having this meeting. I'm just kind of a regular guy, but the thing that's got me up here, that got me fired up, is the raids on the dispensaries. What is the sense in this? It's been approved by the state, it's been approved by several different votes, you know that people want it here. People need these medicines. You're closing the stores, you're breaking them up to where things that were secure aren't. I now go to a dispensary that had a locked door between the outside and the inside. When the sheriffs came through, they destroyed it. Now there's just a door. What's secure about that? And the, excuse me, the actions of your sheriffs have brought that on. I don't know who's directing your sheriffs, I don't know whether it's any of these people in this council or not, but this needs to stop. This is ridiculous. It's supposed to be a government of the people, by the people, for the people. You're not listening to the people here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you all for being here tonight and sharing your thoughts with us. It's important that we hear from you on all of the issues, so I'm really glad that you all came out here tonight. I also know people who use medicinal marijuana because of the effects of chemotherapy or rheumatoid arthritis, so I understand the benefits, the medicinal benefits of marijuana, and like a lot of the pharmaceuticals that we have, that were derived from plants, it's not unreasonable that pot has medicinal benefits. And one of the speakers earlier said that he thought we were stuck in the past, and I submit to you that we are not stuck in the past, what we are is stuck between the people and the federal government. And one of the things that we have to look at here also as the council, is public safety for our residents and for medicinal marijuana users. And, so I know that the motion has been moved and seconded, and staff is going to be bringing back a report for us to talk about, that was my understanding. The motion was that we have council direct staff to come up with a proposal prior to the end of April to allow safe, reliable access in the form of delivery and limited storefront access. So when this comes back to us, I'm gonna be asking for a comprehensive report, because some of the concerns that I have with the whole discussion and the topic, recognizing the value of medicinal marijuana for patients, we also have a federal government that has promised to crack down, and it is still illegal on the federal level. Well, that's one of the places that we are stuck at. We have residents, we have constituents who have said, "This is what we want," we have a federal government who has said, "It's not legal, you can't have it." The previous administration, I don't know, I didn't hear a lot about, a lot of enforcement on that issue, the current administration has intimated that perhaps there would be more enforcement on the federal level. So where does that leave us as a city in protecting the city, as well as protecting our residents? One of the other issues for everybody, I think, in public safety is the value and the quality of the medicine that you're getting was discussed by some of the speakers. And I know that a couple of meetings I've had in Sacramento, where this discussion in Prop 4 was discussed prior to the election, I know that the state had already, even as of last summer, put into place a director of, I don't even know what the title is, somebody in the state government is the director of medicinal marijuana, or recreational marijuana licensing and testing, and I know that every single plant grown has to be tagged, it has to be identified, and they have to go in for testing to make sure that they're free of pesticides, or mold, or issues, whatever the issues are, that they have to be quality plants. And then they have to be licensed and regulated. So, my question is, because that was Prop 64 on recreational pot, my question would be to find out what, if any, of the regulations through the state regarding testing and licensing and quality control, if we can call it quality control, for recreational pot, what of those regulations are transferable to medicinal marijuana as well? What are the crossovers between recreational and medicinal? And also, it was brought up about the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department, and I know that some of the growers, and we've had some of the issues, not just in Vista, but throughout the state, some of the public safety issues, and how would the inspections and how would the public safety as far as fire hazards, et cetera, be addressed? How would we know that the growers and the producers were qualified and safe for themselves, their employees, and any of the consumers that they have? So I would want to know that issue as well. And then also, and I guess part of this would come from the city attorney, in keeping track of what the federal government is doing, and what situation does that put us in as a city, as far as compliance or non-compliance with federal rules? Because that is also something that, as the council, we also have to look out for the benefit of the city as a whole. So, I absolutely understand and recognize and advocate for all medicinal things that people can use for them. I've had several members of my family have cancer or had cancer, some have passed on. I have friends who use, I won't, but I could tell you, friends that use medicinal marijuana, and if it weren't for that, they probably would have succumbed to the effects of chemotherapy, because it's one of those things where sometimes the cure is as bad or worse than the disease itself. And so I do know people that are alive because they were using cannabis during their chemotherapy sessions. So I'm not opposed to it. What my issue is, is looking at it as a representative of the people and a representative and protector of the city, is through public safety, through the issues that we'd have to deal with on the federal level, with what could be coming at us at that, and right now, we're not sure what that is. And as, also as the quality assurance and what the state is regulating through recreational, and how we can transition and translate that to medicinal. So I would be looking for a very comprehensive staff report on all of those issues when it comes before us. So again, I thank you all for being here tonight and sharing with us your concerns on this issue.
Deputy Mayor Franklin?
The Obama administration, before it concluded, did open up new research opportunities on marijuana. I think, an article that I read while I was listening, said that there was previously one authorized growing facility, now there are several. So, researchers in compliance with federal law are now researching, you know, legally, the benefits of medical marijuana. And I do recognize that there are some medicinal benefits of marijuana, I'm not a pharmacologist or a doctor, so I don't intend to have any debate over the science, because I'm not equipped to make those decisions. But I'm encouraged, and I recognize as a layperson, that there are many effective drugs that are derived from the same plants as cocaine and heroin, and so it does not, I, as an individual, do not oppose research, in fact, I fully support research on any substance that could bring healing or cure or pain relief, and be an excellent remedy, totally All of that said, the Obama administration did announce about eight years ago, that it would not be aggressively enforcing the federal marijuana laws. The President went to the Rose Garden, he made that pronouncement, and he issued a press release. The Obama administration, President Obama said that, quote, "He would let the science and not ideology dictate his position when it came to marijuana," which I think is smart. I don't have an ideology that opposes medical marijuana or medicines derived from marijuana because it comes from marijuana, I don't have that at all. All of that said, I do, you know, I will say that I promised voters, I was asked when I ran, and I promised voters that I would not vote to allow medical dispensaries or any, excuse me, I did not say medical dispensaries, I promised that I wouldn't allow the sale of marijuana in the city of Vista, and I was elected on that pledge, and it's a pledge that I intend to keep, and I want to share with you the most important reason why I'm gonna keep that pledge. And by the way, let me also preface this by saying, I have long said, and I have shared with Councilwoman Green, numerous spirited conversations about this subject, in which I think Councilwoman Green would give me the benefit of the doubt for having been open-minded. But, just as there are drugs that are derived from other controlled substances that are sold at Walgreens and CVS, they're prescribed by qualified medical doctors, they're dispensed by licensed pharmacists in controlled settings, and I would never oppose the sale or dispensary of marijuana-derived medicines at a legal pharmacy that's regulated. You know, we devised pharmacy licensure at the state level, and every state in the Union has a state pharmacy licensure for the purpose of ensuring the safety of its citizens. The federal government has a Food and Drug Administration to ensure the safety and efficacy of drugs, the city of Vista and the state of California have no such agency, we have no such, you know, resident knowledge of pharmacological anything, we don't have those facilities. Again, I'm glad that the federal government is opening some research into the area. But that being said, the new presidential administration that is currently occupied in the White House, has already indicated its intent to more strongly enforce the laws. Recently, the United States Attorney for the Southern District of California was terminated, or tendered his resignation, and we're soon to have a new United States Attorney, who will receive direction from the incumbent Attorney General and the President of the United States. And we may see some dramatic differences in the way that drug, the marijuana law, which is still a Schedule I narcotic, the most controlled level of narcotics, we may see a change in the way that the federal law is implemented or enforced. And chief among all other things is the fact that, whether I like it or not, I swore an oath, as we all did, to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America. And the Constitution says, "This Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof, shall be the supreme law of the land." We don't have to like the language, I have had to vote on so many repugnant pieces of legislation, that I have been informed that I had to, because it was in compliance with state law and the state constitution. It is not my charge, nor any of our charges, to decide which laws passed by superior jurisdictions, including the state of California and the federal government pursuant to the Constitution of the United States of America, we agree with. We are, however, sworn to uphold and defend those laws and to obey them. That is the Constitution. Some people don't like some parts of the Constitution, they're welcome to engage in the amendment process. However, we are sworn to uphold it. I will do my duty, I will execute my oath of office, I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, and I will not vote for a law that contravenes the Constitution or the laws of the United States of America.
Councilmember Green?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Franklin, for letting us know where you stand on the item here. I wanted to just say that I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of you guys for just showing up tonight and giving us your heartfelt plea. You know, the reason why there's raids in our area is because of a land use issue, I saw the pictures and saying, "Hey, are we gonna raid your land for sheds, are we gonna raid your land for this?" And, you know, in my opinion, which is my humble opinion, some is excessive, and the reason why we're discussing this tonight is because we do want to allow safe, reliable access to patients in Vista. Ultimately, why I have you guys here tonight is because there is a Citizens Initiative, which a lot of you signed, seven thousand of you actually signed the Citizens Initiative. Anytime there's policy changes, there are negotiations that occur to those policy changes. This Citizens Initiative that got seven thousand votes worries me a little bit as a policymaker, because it does take the power out of my hands as a policymaker who was elected to represent my people, our people, who are you, sitting right in front of us. Some of the items on the Citizens Initiative I don't agree with, which is why I said, "Hey, I want to make sure that we are allowed, as a council, to say something about it." Because, once those signatures are gathered, we are forced to put it to ballot, we are forced to pay the $350,000, and if the citizens vote for that, this Citizens Initiative that came up that says, "We want to have ten dispensaries, and we want to allow them in all commercial, industrial, manufacturers, business park, mixed zones, mixed-use zones, and residential apartments, therefore a dispensary could be located in a residential unit." It automatically waives all parking requirements applicable to this business, as opposed to other businesses in the city. Additionally, I think, as somebody else stated, is that the violators of the proposed ordinance, including medical cannabis dispensaries, which allow without first obtaining a certificate of occupancy or business license, could only be prosecuted for infractions, not misdemeanors. Those are a few of the issues that I had with this particular Citizens Initiative. I don't doubt that we need to provide safe, reliable access. The reason for this meeting, in my opinion, isn't because, only because I am an advocate for safe, reliable access, but ultimately, I'm hoping to show the voters that there's no need to sign a petition, and that the city will take care of its residents' medical needs for those who need safe, reliable access. So I hope at the close of this discussion, my fellow council members will have heard everybody who showed up tonight, which is why we encourage you to show up, which is why we encourage you to draw these discussion cards. Since I've been on this council, people have been showing up, people have been speaking, and it's been that way in the past, it's gonna be that way in the future. Know that your pleas and your testimonies are not falling on deaf ears. And that's all I have to say on this complete subject, I'm ready to close the discussion whenever you are.
Councilmember Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna keep it short, because I don't want to go into a coughing fit again and have to excuse myself. Plus, I think we've all heard quite enough, I think, from our fellow council members, and it's getting late. So, Mr. Green, I do agree with what you just said, you know, and that's my concern, I've had that conversation with you. There's a lot of things I disagree with in the petition, so I also agree that, you know, we're hearing from Bystons, and I am the one that said that things change in twenty years, right? So, I'm an adult, I can change with the times, and whether I agree or not, doesn't, you know, really matter, I gotta listen to the people that put me here, and that is why I will consider this. I would like to hear from staff. Couple things that have already been said, but I'll just repeat them. You know, the thing I heard from the people tonight is they want safe and reliable access, but they also mentioned time and over time, excuse me, they wanted regulation, so it would be safe. You know, there's people saying that it's not safe going into some of the places, or they don't feel safe, so we need to work on some regulations that are gonna make it safe, but we also have to give access to people as well. And my concerns would be the number that we have available. I don't want to see where we have some kind of a price war on this, I think it needs to be regulated, and it sounds like these dispensaries are regulating themselves as far as price goes, and I heard one lady say that she's getting it for free, so, I mean, it sounds like these are decent business people. The other thing is, I do have some concerns about the federal government, and I would like to know what our options would be if things do change in Washington DC, and they start overriding state law, and what our out would be, or what our protection would be. I think that's the biggest thing that needs to be investigated, it's gonna probably take some time. So with that, I'll close.
Okay, I actually, I actually agree with you, and my only other thing that nobody's mentioned is, I think that it's like a cash business, and I don't know this for sure, but that, you know, the banks won't, you can't, they can't deposit the cash in the bank, so there has to be some way of regulating that and keeping the places safe. So I wanted, I'll look forward to hearing from the staff and getting a full report on that, but I agree with them, so.
And how we would tax it.
And what?
How we may tax it.
Oh, yeah, tax it, yeah, okay, and so Deputy Mayor Franklin?
Yeah, I think it's important, because we did see an initiative drafted and circulated that essentially removed all restrictions whatsoever, and made a change to the law, the most- The most serious concern I have was that it made any violation of the city's regulations simply an infraction instead of a misdemeanor, therefore, basically saying, you know, a ticket is the worst you can do if you violate. So if you, you know, if you open a dispensary next to a school, all we could do is ticket you. That's totally unacceptable. And I know that the people of Vista will not support that. There are serious flaws. If an initiative was brought successfully, a petition, and if we went to a vote, I certainly would hope that we would be fully prepared, as a city, to offer an acceptable alternative to voters. I think that that's important, one that would protect the city's interests and protect the interests of the people. So I do think we should be prepared. However, as I said before, I'm not at a place where I'm ready to adopt it, short of, essentially, and, you know, and I am not concerned about $350,000. I will spend it all day long to make sure that the people's voice is heard here, and the people's voice is heard through elections. Could I have order in the chamber, please? The people's voice is not heard through shouts, it's not heard through insults, it's heard through their elective process. So, if it comes that we need to provide an alternative, then I think that that's a smart thing to do. One other thing, that, I had a conversation with a deputy sheriff, the sheriff did dispatch a delegation of officers to Colorado to visit with law enforcement in Colorado, and I would ask that at a future meeting where this topic is brought up, if it is, I would ask that we have representatives from the Sheriff's Department that were a part of that delegation to Colorado, to come and address us with a full briefing about the law enforcement issues related. We have to have an understanding of what the law enforcement realities are, that is absolutely paramount. And so, if this issue were to come back, I would ask, at that time, that we have the deputy sheriffs that were present in Colorado, give us the best, you know, advice that they can, based on what they gained in knowledge from their trip.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I think we will, we don't have to vote on this or anything, we're just going to, the staff is going to bring us back a report, so that will end this. So, with that, we're going to move on to our oral communications. I have two public comments, let's see, I have, are the kids here at Rancho Buena Vista Public Policy?
Real quick, excuse me, Madam Mayor, I apologize for interrupting you. Just so that I'm clear for the people sitting in the audience here, basically, the way that this works is there's no vote, it's that there is a general consensus that we want the staff to come back with the proposal. So as far as, you know, the audience is concerned, they should know that we are moving forward with having the staff present us with the proposal that we will vote on at a future meeting. I just wanted to make sure everybody in the chambers understood how the process works. Sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. I have just two speakers here. Mayor Joe Poole.
Yeah, thank you again, and it'll be very short. I'm just here, I'm a Vista resident, I've been here for 20 years, and, you know, I talked about my husband a little bit earlier, and, you know, one thing, back in 2000s...
I need to have respect. Just a minute, Mayor Joe.
Sure, thanks.
I need to have you not talk, so we can continue our meeting, please.
Thank you, okay, go ahead. Yeah, back in 2006, 2008, when we had a lot of Minutemen things going on, and a lot of raids, and a lot of checkpoints, and field interviews, and saturation patrols, at that time, my husband, you know, he was from Brazil, and he was a black man, and he would not go out of the house on the weekends, because there was so, it was so oppressive in our community in Vista here on this side, not Shadow Ridge on this side. So I'm here to ask the city, that given our Vista population is Latino, Muslim, and other refugees of about 50%, and given the fear that I know exists in this community at this time, that the city would be on the right side of history to pass a resolution as a welcoming city, and an assurance that local law enforcement will not work with federal enforcement agencies, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Our, the Rancho Buena Vista Public Policy, it looks like Brenda Pedroza, Hannah and Irma, are you all here still? Yay, you stayed.
Of course we did. Okay. My name is Hannah Lycans, and this is...
Irma Martine.
And we're from the Public Policy Club at Rancho Buena Vista High School. Our mission is to prevent underage drinking and drug use in our community. We work in partnership with North Coastal Prevention Coalition and Vista Community Clinic to hold various forums and events to help combat this major problem. On Tuesday, March 21st, 2017, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, we will be hosting an underage drinking prevention forum at the AVO Playhouse, located at 303 Main Street in Vista. The parents of the victim of an underage drunk driver will be there to share their tragic story of how underage drinking affected their family. Their son, baby Isaiah, was a young boy who was struck in his stroller by a teenage drunk driver, and now is paralyzed and faces many problems that make his life a constant struggle. The family will be there to help prevent underage drinking and bring a powerful message to our community.
In addition, there will be a speaker from Vista Sheriff's Station, and Dr. Mary Boyl from UCSD will address the impact of alcohol and marijuana on adolescent brain development. Members of our club will co-facilitate the forum and help attendees, including parents and students, learn that most teens don't use alcohol or drugs. According to 2015 California Healthy Kids Survey for Vista Unified, fewer than one in four high school juniors reported drinking in the past month. However, alcohol remains the drug of choice for teens, and 66% of juniors report it's fairly or very easy to obtain. Students report that the most common ways teens get alcohol are at parties or events outside of school, from friends or another teenager, or their own home.
As we head into spring break, prom graduation, and summer season, the forum will serve as an important reminder of the dangers of underage drinking, and urge parents and young adults to be the source of alcohol to minors. The Public Policy Club would like to formally invite you and the residents of Vista and the surrounding North County to attend our forum. We are thankful to Councilmember Joe Green, who will provide welcome remarks, and Councilmember John Franklin, who plan to attend. We feel that this forum will provide a great deal of information on the effects of underage drinking and drug use. Our club is looking to fill the seats in order to spread our message to as many people as possible. We believe that your attendance will be the utmost importance to show our community that we are doing all we can to help combat the problem of underage drinking and drug use. Thank you very much for your time.
It's the AVO Theater?
Yes.
And what is the date again?
It's March 21st, 2012.
March 21st, at what time?
From 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
6:00 to 8:00 PM, okay. And I'm on vacation that day, so I'm going to miss that, but I'm so, good luck to you all, that'd be a good presentation. Okay, with that, that's all of our speakers, so that will go on to Mayor's, our council comments, I'll do my little things here. So there's, first, there's a free workshop to help families prepare for college, fill out applications, and work through the selection process. It's going to be held on Saturday, March 18th, and again on March 25th at the Vista Library, from 11:00 to noon. And for more information, you can call the Vista Library, and their number is 760-643-5100. The Moonlight is offering $10 tickets, discount tickets, for ages 16 and under to Rhythmic Circus. It's an international touring company on April 7th. Ticket information is online at moonlightstage.com. That's supposed to be a really good show, so I'm looking forward to, I'm going to go see it, I'm looking forward to seeing it. And lastly, the Wave Water Park, can you believe this? The Wave Water Park opens on May 27th, it's almost summer again. Season passes are on sale now, season pass information is available online at thewavewaterpark.com. And those are my announcements, so I'll move on down to Councilmember Aguilera.
Yeah, the only thing I want to comment on is our NCTD meeting, March 16th at 2:00 PM, is not going to be here at City Council Chambers. Apparently, the board was not satisfied with our facility. Wasn't big enough, actually. So anyways, we're going to be back at the Mission Address for NCTD in the boardroom there, so just want to get that information out there to the public. I did mention that it would be here, but we have nine members of the board, so we would have to kick staff down there, and it just doesn't fit. So anyways, it's going to be March 16th, 2:00 PM, on Mission Avenue, at the NCTD boardroom. We are removing one Vista route, so if you are taking the breeze, if you're taking particularly the 335, be a good time to show up. It is going to be serviced by the 334, so I don't think there's going to be any loss of service, but I would love to see you at our meeting and hear from you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to report, yesterday, we had the city's selection committee for the LAFCO Commission, and there was only one change to the LAFCO Commission makeup, and that's Mayor Ben Sanitas Catherine Blakespear is the new North County Coastal Representative. The North County inland, the South County, and the East County representatives were not voted on because of a technicality, so they're going to sit out a rotation of being voted on, so they will remain for the next year. So we won't meet again for the LAFCO Commission until January of next year. We do, however, have a city selection committee coming up again in April to talk about the coastal commission appointments, so we'll see how that goes.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
No remarks.
Councilmember Green.
All right, so number one, for those of you guys all sticking around till the end of the meeting, thank you. 8:35, three hours, awesome. The other thing is, is I just want to thank my council members, this discussion has been extremely enlightening to me, although we aren't always all on the same side. I want to make sure that our citizens know, every single person sitting up here on this dais loves the City of Vista, and we all look through it from the same lens, is, hey, how can we help the citizens? And we have different circles of people, we have different constituents, we do live in different areas and have different circles of friends, per se, but we're all looking out for Vista. And, you know, you might hear difference of opinions up here, but know that this is a job, we work together. I have four other people who have the same job as me, it's extremely unique, and we're not going to get along all the time, but their insight is greatly appreciated. I appreciate you guys all speaking, and I also appreciate you guys being open-minded for our community, and I know that they appreciate it. So, thank you guys, my fellow council members, so much, I'm really learning a lot, and I appreciate all the guidance you've given me to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, oh no, City Manager first.
No, City Attorney, it's fine.
I know.
Just one item here, on Tuesday, March 21st, the Planning Commission at 6:00 PM will hold their meeting, and two items that they will be dealing with, one will be the mixed-use discussion and code amendments that came before you with your direction, and the other one will be the wireless communication facilities, and this is a policy, a public hearing with a policy that will be coming before you after it goes to the Planning Commission.
Okay. No City Attorney. Derald.
I have many thoughts, but no comments. Thank you.
How about our City Clerk, Cappy? No, nothing today? Okay, with that, we are adjourned at 8:36, yay!